Here.
Councilor Hendrickson.
Here.
Councilor Ludwig.
Here.
Councilor Magini.
Here.
Councilor Nissuta.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Here.
Councilor Russo.
Here.
Councilor Santinella.
Here.
And Councilor Ungary.
Here.
Ten members are present, one is absent.
Thank you, Sheila. Next is budget discussions, and we're going to start off this evening with the Planning Department, presented by the Director of Planning, Lori Whitten. And I just want to remind everybody that we are televised for the first time this year, so make sure the language is appropriate.
As always.
Welcome, Lori.
My name is Lori Whitten, and for the record, I am the Director of Planning.
Lori, hang on one second while I get your slideshow up here.
Okay.
I think this happened last year, too, John. Well, I had them do a last-minute something, so it's my fault.
And I had to go first. Because I'll be briefed. Our three will be briefed.
I just need to be able to click faster. I don't think so. Just need to figure out how to. Okay, so you can be on there faster.
There you go. Ready?
There we go.
All right. So again, my name is Lori Whitten, and I'm the Director of Planning, and I am here to present our budget proposal. The Planning Department is a well-functioning team consisting of five full-time and one part-time of staff members who are consistently striving to do better. Your fiscal year approval for a part, fiscal year 25 approval for the part-time secretary has been an increased success for the department in keeping the post-approval process going. In fact, now applicants are actually following through with their post-approval requirements in a timely fashion, well, most of them, anyway. The Planning Staff is working together to implement new policies and procedures, respond to at least 700 inquiries to date, use digital means as much as possible, update and simplify land use applications, forms, and processes, and we have been cleaning out and updating our filing system. And, next slide. The ARTs, our Administrative Review Team Meetings, are saving time and money for developers. We have had, we've received encouraging information and feedback from applicants for the pre-development process in Enfield. And staff of the Planning and Zoning Commission are making excellent headway on our zoning regulations, which basically have not been updated since 2001. So, next slide. So, our budget is pretty much the same as it usually is. It had a slight decrease due to a senior planner leaving and a junior planner being hired, so the slight decrease is basically from salary and benefits. We have used part of that, and most of it, for increase in certified mailings that we have to send out for any permit processes. And then, we added $800 to the printing budget, so we can actually print our zoning regulations out. Next slide. And, there you go. And the pie charts also reflect the decreased salary and benefits. So, not much difference than last year's. Next slide, please. This will be, this is a little bit different. So, the Land Use Commissions, we were proposing to increase their training budget. The Connecticut General Statutes, yeah, statutes now require that the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Planning and Zoning Commission earn four credits every two years. We anticipate this is also going to be true with the Inland Wetlands Commission. So, the good thing is, is the commissioners actually want to learn. They are enjoying their, their training, and they're actually learning about why they're doing it, and I think they're, they like that. So, I've proposed a budget to fund training for all, but not just a select few, but all the commissioners and all of our land use commissions. So, overall, I mean, our budget, original budget was about 2,800, and if we add about just under 5,000, we can train all of our commissioners in every land use commission. The, the, the hard part to decipher how much money exactly we might need is because the classes are very varied. It's all a new thing to the state. There's a lot of different organizations offering the classes. Some are virtual, some are in person, some are $30, some are $60. And they also have varied jurisdictions, and it could be on a weekday, or weeknight, or a weekend, so you just never know when all the commissioners could actually get to take the training. So, next slide, please. Looking into the future, if we could read the writing on the walls, we do have a wish list. We would like to at least put on the radar for a part-time and/or a full-time zoning enforcement officer and an in-house GIS, which is a Geographic Information System Coordinator. I'll talk first about the zoning enforcement officer. Next slide. So, our zoning enforcement officer, who is very good and talented, has been with us for some seven, eight years. There may be a time in the future that he might retire. We'll just leave it at that. So, we always think that it would be, it's always good planning to do in training with somebody that's already here for continuity. Aside from the complaints that the zoning enforcement officer takes care of, they also produce all the zoning permits. They calculate the bonds, they do inspections for erosion and sedimentation control, they also do landscaping inspections and pre-construction meetings. We've also found that there's been an increase in workload, because most of the permits that they get are for properties that already are existing, that they've already been built on, and we have to actually go back and do research and analysis on what permits have been given in the past, and that's becoming a very time-consuming task. So, we do anticipate some future needs. We anticipate increased workload with potential upcoming inspections for short-term rentals, which could, could actually be funded through taxes for some revenue, possible in-law apartments, and accessory dwelling units. So, just as a general ballpark, the full-time CEO of benefits currently is about $89,000, and a part-time person might be about $50,000 to $60,000. Next slide, please. The in-house GIS coordinator, again, Geographic Information Systems, which is basically a mapping system for all parcels in the town, and it has different layers, whether it's topography, or wetlands, or zoning. The, the last time we had an in-house technician for that was in about 2018. And unfortunately, the town has been hiring consultants since then that really have not served the town well. An in-house coordinator could update current layers, such as the zoning, parks, wetlands, and, and others. For instance, we've had the Thompsonville regulations in place for over six years. We still haven't had it mapped. And it's, 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 you know, that's extra work for us. We could create new mapping layers and, and studies for open space preservation, agricultural preservation, traffic, and, and a lot of other things. I, sometimes I hear police use the GIS for whatever. Can talk about.
That's been very harmful.
And also to create exhibits for grants and presentations. So, more often than not now, if you were applying for a grant, they want some, some graphics, they want some exhibits. So, that could be something that they could be doing. And this could potentially benefit every department. The salary truly depends greatly on experience and credentials, anywhere from like $40,000 to $100,000. I, I did an AI search, which was pretty kind of cool, and they said that around $60,000 to $75,000 plus benefits would be about the average for this region. So, we would like to look into both positions more thoroughly, and it's definitely on, in our radar, and we hopefully think that it's in your radar as well. Next slide, for questions.
May I, Mr. Mayor, before we ask questions? Thank you, Lori. I would like you to know that I didn't put those positions in the budget, because you see we're, we're challenged once again with the budget. However, I encourage all staff, for those positions, I thought, you know, we try to forecast the future, you know, the growth, we don't want to be impeded when we really start to take off with all these projects. So, I'm, I asked staff, and Lori in particular, on the planning side, what would help. You'll see this in a couple of the presentations. So, it's on your radar, so you know, when we really pick things up, and things are going well, these are a couple of positions that you can consider in the future. And I will tell you this, it is an amazing result, and a small pittance of a price to pay for the training increase. You know, for years, we've struggled to try to get people the training, and the skills that they need to be on these boards and commissions. They're laypeople, they're from our communities, and then they're asked to interpret and enforce laws and statutes. The fact that this has taken off, and that they enjoy it, we brought back Attorney Elston to do a stay-in-your-lane for planning and zoning, this is a great investment, and we all know what a lawsuit costs. We wouldn't be able to pay a lawyer for one day for this entire amount to train everybody in the whole department. We would spend that on just him going to one court.
That would be like an hour.
Yeah.
Or two.
So, with that, Mr. Mayor?
It's not just the department either, it's commissioners also, correct?
Oh, no, that's strictly for commissioners.
Oh, right, commissioners, right. You put the list up again, Mayor, there was a, put the list up, please, John, just to see.
So, planning, zoning, zoning board of appeals, agricultural and conservation commission, historic, and inland wetlands, I missed.
And that is in the budget?
Yes.
That is, the positions are not.
Correct. The wish list, I made everybody do a wish list, which means it's not in the budget. The rest of them are.
Questions for Lori?
Bob, just one question. I like your numbers so far, it's not bad. Question on the GIS coordinator. Is, listing some of the stuff you had there, is AI going to really replace that position anyway? Well, you mean, I mean, you even went to it just to find out the salary. I think AI eventually is going to take that spot.
I, I don't know enough about AI to answer that question.
I don't either, I just know it's coming.
But, you know, I think mapping is mapping, and, you know, that's cartography. I don't know how much it's going to be able to be replaced with AI, because it's got to have a base in the first place.
Okay.
So.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Santinella.
So, you said that you're outsourcing the GIS service now, is that correct?
Yes.
So, how much are you spending now in outsourcing? And is that factored into this budget, or?
It's, it's based on just generalities. We don't have, we don't have somebody in-house right now, and I thought I had the number for the consultant, but I don't recall what, what it is. I apologize for that.
If, would you be able to?
Yeah, we could certainly get that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Lori, please send it to me tomorrow, and I'll send it to all of the councils.
All set, John? Deputy Mayor Pisner.
So, the only question I had was on the full-time enforcement. You said there could be a retirement, so if that person was to retire, we'd be hires, hiring somebody to take his salary. So, we wouldn't actually be looking at an increase. We'd be looking at somebody to fulfill a position that we already have budgeted. Yes.
I believe she's asking, he may retire, his position would remain. This is an additional part-time position, so this would be new.
Part-time.
Yeah.
Okay, so you had a full-time and a part-time.
Yeah, so, I mean, we could use a full-time, a second full-time, based on everything that they do, but we'd be happy just even getting a part-time, and anybody in before he were, he were to retire.
Okay, okay, now I understand, thank you.
Councilor Hendrickson. Sorry, just, because you said the state, this 7,500 is in here, in the budget somewhere. You said that's already in there, right?
That's, that's proposed, yes.
That's in the, it's not in that orco that you're looking at right now? It's in the boards and commissions section of the, of the budget. Thank you, sorry.
That's a Jonathan.
Councilman Ludwig.
John, just the budget. I, I don't know how you put it together. Would be helpful, though, if somebody like, I know they, they collect building permits right for this department. I remember on the wrong department.
That's the wrong.
Okay, so they're not collecting any fees, you know, building?
There, there are some zoning fees and, and other fees like that that are in the revenue budget for it.
Any chance how much, you know, specifically for planning? Just curious, would be nice to kind of be able to connect what they're taking in versus what we're spending.
I'd have to look it up.
If you wouldn't mind, it's a takeaway, even for some of the other departments as well. I know you roll it all up, so I'm not suggesting it's not there, but I think it would be nice for me to be able to tie. And I have a question, Paul, I'm not trying to be difficult here, but you mentioned ADUs. What are we doing with ADUs when we stopped this a few years ago?
So, the, if the statutes may or may not be changing, it's been discussed.
But the town and, the town and planning and zoning unanimously by, by two-thirds vote in against this. So, I don't, so I, again, I'm not, I'm not against the part-time person.
Yeah.
But I get it, I'm not for ADUs, I want to be clear on this. And I, whether the statute changes or not, you know, the town made a statement four years ago that we're not interested in doing it.
I understand that, and, and the Planning and Zoning Commission have not really had a strong discussion on the ADUs. However, we have been watching the statutes, and some of them may be mandatory.
The council voted as well, so it wasn't just planning and zoning, so I think, I think, so I don't think the commission has, yeah, the commission doesn't have the authority, I want to be clear on that, because we voted on it as well. So, I think, it concerns me that we're talking about ADUs. We haven't had a discussion on the council when we unanimously voted it down. So, again, I'm not, I just, just want to make sure that, that you folks know that that needs to come before the council, statute change or not. And, question, I, so this, this, when you say, is it new state statute, or now we're complying with state statute?
We, so we are.
Training, training.
So, we, we are currently complying for the land use commissions for state statute, and the commissioners have all been very good about getting their permits.
It's a state statute, there's no state reimbursement for us complying with state statute.
Not that I know of.
Of course, of course.
And, and, and we anticipate after what we've been seeing, that the inland wetlands will also be required to gain credits.
Okay, got it. And so, this, is this a yearly, annual thing, or was they taking their? That's another thing. So, this is new, this, so this 4, 4,800 is going to be pretty much new in your budget every year?
We, we've never fully funded training for any of the commissions, so it's been slowly going up, and now it's required, so.
And, curious, and I don't know if you can answer this, but I remember having this discussion last year. My memory still isn't filled. This part-time secretary, is the individual servicing multiple departments?
She has.
I remember that discussion we had, Chris, I think, I remember you.
We were trying.
So, is she servicing multiple departments?
When the need arises, more often than not, she can. She is part-time, so sometimes they might need her, but she's not here. But I know she's covered in the town manager's office numerous times, but.
And Mike will just say, when 810 opens next door and they're together, we'll even get more shared.
Yeah, I was just making sure we honored what we discussed last year, thank you. Am I only have a question, I'm sorry, are we done?
No problem.
So, five, explain to me the five full-time employees, exactly what they do. So, I know we separated the departments. So, educate me again on what the five, what planning is exactly doing versus, say, economic development, what we, we.
So, I'm the Director of Planning, so I'm, I'm the Director. We have two, two full-time assistant planners. One kind of covers historic and wetlands, the other one covers planning and zoning and CBA, kind of along with me. And then we've got the zoning enforcement officer and a full-time secretary, and then the part-time secretary.
So, with the zoning officer, is, is there been any issues that, over the last year or two, that he, he or she has been honed in on, you know, that is, they've been focused on in town versus years past? I mean, at one point, we were worried about hedges, growth, that sort of thing.
It's, it's very all-encompassing, and it's very complaint-driven, so it kind of varies. But, you know, they, they don't just, he doesn't just do zoning permits. He, he does the, he, he, he signs off on building permits, and he also does inspections and pre-construction meetings and.
I know he does a lot, yeah, I think it's for our people to understand, exactly.
Yeah.
And last thing, for, for, Lord, Chris, Chris, I know it's this department, the, the top 10, you know, the, the blighted properties, the money that would, it would be nice, again, if it's in this department, I can't remember where it goes in the budget.
It's actually community development.
Community development?
Yeah.
All right, we get, we have, again, how much we're collecting. Again, that's important for people to understand, some of these departments actually are generating revenue. And again, I get it, he rolls it all up into one number, but I think it's just from perspective, it would be nice to understand, because there's some.
I'll ask her tomorrow.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Councilman Russo.
The last GIS announced technician, prior to 2018, was that a full-time position or part-time?
I believe it was full-time, it was prior to me starting here. So, but I've just been asking around recently to different staff members, and, and I needed to speak with Paul Russell as well, the IT, and he was like, yeah, maybe we should consider this.
All right, so you weren't here, do you know by chance how we lost that position? Like, how was it vacated?
I don't have the history of that, I apologize.
So, I have.
Anyone else? So, Chris, along with, kind of bouncing off of what Mike said, do your numbers in this budget reflect all the departments joining together next door at Development Services? I mean, for, you know, are we going to end up with additional staff or anything like that?
No, I mean, if anything, it would be the opposite, I would think, when we come together. It is not planned to lay anybody off, but perhaps individuals, if we had two or three from departments that were there doing reception-type job, they might not be freed up to do something else, and we could fill another position in lieu of.
Right.
We're not going, when they move there, we're not going to come back and say, we need X, Y, and Z.
Right, no, that's what I'm saying. So, Lori, I made a comment that her help is also helping out in the town manager's office, so that position could possibly be shifted to your department.
Well, we'll have retirements, we'll have people within, I mean, certainly anybody, we don't want to lose a job, but I think, you know, you have attrition, and they're trained, and they're cross-trained now because of Steve implementing that. Steve is like.
Yeah, oh, and I know the person that is also there, also in economic development, which is still in this building, so she, she can go back and forth.
And we'll continue that.
Making the town manager's office.
Right, okay. Anybody else? Lori, thank you very much. You guys do a great job upstairs. I know Rick is pulled from every single direction you can imagine in this town, and.
And, and more.
And he does a phenomenal job, and I think all you guys do great, and thank you. And I know this next year, hopefully, is going to get a lot busier, and that's when we're really going to need everybody to step up. Thank you. John?
Another question. The budget book isn't bound, could you give them, as each one comes up, what sections are remotely given up, so they would be able to immediately look them up, please?
Okay. Thank you. Did anybody find the planning one?
I can't find P and Z.
Planning?
Planning.
Yeah, I can't, what pages is it?
It's code 610, there's no pages, it's code 6100.
Okay, thank you, Bob.
Public Works. Next page.
It's, okay, because I've been looking for it, I apologize.
And this way we'll do it.
That's, that's the planning, that's not the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission is in the.
All right, so that's where my confusion came in, so I apologize, so. All right, so I'm in Public Works, and I go past Public Works.
That's planning, then four pages later is Boards and Commissions.
Oh, so it's under.
It looks, it looks like this.
So, it's under Boards and Commissions?
Right, and it's mixed in.
Okay, all right. That's where my, my mistake came in, I was looking for something that's.
John, what a hand it'd be a lot easier if he just gave us the section.
And before the next director starts, let John give them the sections, and then they can follow along, and they won't be distracted.
That's what I have tabs on here. Well, the budget book has tabs in it, but we don't have a budget book yet, so.
So, the registrar of voters is under code section 1,500, 0000, that's a little bit before where you ordered previously?
Yeah, no, I already got that page. I found register, it was just the Planning and Zoning, I'm sorry.
It's a hybrid.
Okay.
All right, is everybody ready then? John?
We don't have a presentation for registrars.
Well, we do, but it's in person, right?
That's right. That's right. Tom and Chris, welcome.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for having us today. We, my report, as just a generality, that we got through the year with the new early voting shenanigans that we had to comply with, and it worked out very well. Going forward into this year, we are going to be getting new equipment in the next couple of months that is already in its warehouses, just waiting for our turn for them to come out, train us, and deliver the new products and take away the old products. So, we'll have new scanners, grade machines that will store on the memory card the picture of the ballot. Work a lot better under all different conditions, and we'll have more of them than we had on the other machines. And we're really looking forward to making the election process a little bit faster, especially on our end in the, in the closeout, the auditing, and the after-the-election functions. It's going to be a lot more smooth and easy, very secure, same type of system in terms of it not being hooked up to the internet. It's a memory card-driven system, so there's no security issues that would be there that weren't there before. So, the public will be at ease with that. And, so, so that's what we're looking forward to there. There is, and I'll get to it in part of the presentation, a totally different way of spending money for maintenance on them that they're forcing us to do, and I'll go over that. But first, I want to say, in addition to that, at the end of this fiscal year that we're about to end, unless something happens we're not aware of, we're expecting to give back our traditional few thousand dollars back to the general fund at the end of the budget season. We had to move a few things around, especially payroll for the early voting, but we're still going to come in under, under our budget. If I had to put a number on it, I'd say 3, 4, 4,500, something like that will come back. For this year going forward, I'm going to start with salaries. First one is our temp seasonal, that's a small number, that's a number that we always use for when we do internal card audits, when we have need help in different parts of the canvas, if it's a large canvas. This year, we just about spent the 2,000, we're going to put in for basically what we're spending, and we're going to put in for a couple hundred dollars less this year, 1,800. Election workers, that was dynamic, because obviously with three elections last year with early voting, 25 days of early voting, we had a massive increase in our workers that we needed. So, this year, we expect, because we're budgeting for two elections, that number's going to drop down to 4,905, and that includes early voting and then the regular general election. Under stipend, anybody have any questions on that? That's up.
Let me tell you.
Okay. Our, our stipends, that is, just as a reminder, that's the, how the deputies and us as registrars get paid. We don't get salaries, we don't get hourly, we get stipends, and that's, that stipend number that's the same as it currently is. There's nothing under other compensation. When you get down to the matching Social Security and Medicare, those are the standard numbers that we put in for it, the percentages that we need. And for some reason, the way it works out with our workers, depending on the threshold of hours they work, if they only work one election, one day, they won't hit the threshold to report or have Social Security money taken out. So, this number is assuming everyone is going to have taken out. So, at the end of the year, there's always a little money to get back there. But we decided to, you know, not, not try to guess that, because it's just too complicated to try to figure it out. If we have an additional referendum or a primary, then most of the workers go into that category where they are going to get Social Security and Medicare taken out. Everybody follow me on that? Okay. Next page. Professional development is our training, mandatory training of our pool of moderators and for our registrars, registered, registration, certification. Christina still needs to do half of her, she did her first half this year, and she's doing her second half next year, that's what that $800 is. Above that, $420 is the certifying of moderators. We always try to do two extra ones every year, somebody will bring in and, and promote to that position, and then there's research in there. So, we have like two or three research, four researchs, I believe, and then we have room for three people that we promote. room for three people that we promote, somebody drops off, we want to take somebody from an AR, make them a moderator, we've got to have them go through the training. So that number comes in pretty close to last year.
Hold on, Tom, are you looking at number 53?
Yeah.
Yes.
Because that's not what's broken down on ours.
It's not broken down, that's all.
Okay.
When you say 53.
Yep.
Total, I see, you know, $3,520 for professional development.
Oh, okay.
That's what you see?
But you were, you broke it down.
You were bringing like 800.
Yeah, you don't have the breakdown?
No.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, that's the breakdown. I made mine, right, John, I made it real detailed, we did that. Other professional services, now this ties into the configuring of the ballots for the elections, and the NCOA data for the canvassing, and that number this year is $3,150, but it's going to drop, it dropped to 1550 this year. However, if you go down to equipment maintenance, which is the next category is down, equipment repair and maintenance, you'll see this year.
Yeah, no, I'm on there.
You'll see this year is $4,110, and that's jumping to $10,960, and that's the schedule by the state of the servicing and maintenance every year of new equipment. Now, that takes effect the 1st of January of 2026, so if we do not have an elective primary in the spring of this, this coming year, that number won't be spent, because the first six months, the state is covering that cost. But if we have a February referendum primary in April, something like that, and it's still in this coming fiscal year, then that, that will apply, so going forward, it's basically $10,960 a year, but because the first six months is covered, we may get the whole year for nothing, or reduced, because we only did one, you follow me? But it's in the budget, because that is what the cost is, and not knowing exactly what we'll have for referendums, we're just going to leave it in there. But the money gets shifted, that's where it goes way up there, but it goes down under the professional services, because we used to pay for the maintenance of the machines, and then we paid for the programming of the machines separately, two different categories, they added up to about $7,000, now it's going to be about $12,000, 12.5, so it's a little bit more, but it's mostly in one category now. But going forward, that'll even out, so you'll, you'll see next year that it'll be reminiscent of the year before. Any question on the new machines or any of that? Yes, sir.
Just one question on the maintenance, is that going to change with the number of elections we have per year?
Yeah, so there's two sets of maintenance, there's the maintenance of the equipment itself, but then there's the programming, the setting up of the ballots, and there's a, you know, a $20 fee for every.
So the 10, 10, 9 is for two elections?
Yes.
So it'll go up next year if we have three elections?
If you have three, it'll go up, if you have one, it'll go down, and we'll keep that, just, and that's the same as it was in the past, every time they had to reprogram their memory cards for an election, we had to pay another $3,000. You know, so it was either 9,000, or it was 6,000, or it was 3,000, depending on how many elections you had.
And you can, you can verify that these scanners aren't connected to the internet?
I can verify that, yes.
So, real quick, I'm sure you, is there a documented process on how you handle the card, you mentioned, whatever, the scan, whatever you call it, sorry, scanner, card, memory card?
Yeah, we're going to get trained on it, we saw it.
Is there a public documentation of how it works?
We can answer that in about two weeks, we have training next week and the weekend.
So when you get the training, if I could.
They've already provided us with a really nice PowerPoint, step by step by step, so we can even put something together.
Right, it has to be on a website, so people understand.
You can put it on our website, and, yeah, and it would, this is what the workers do, and this is how.
And then what about how you handle?
The new machines have touchscreens, they show you that your ballot was accepted.
I understand, things get hacked all the time, though, and that's why I'm a concern, and sorry, I want to make sure, then also how we're handling the card, who's touching it?
And that's basically the same as before.
So I just want it documented, so people.
Seals, security, yeah, and, and we can, that'll be provided on there, too.
Okay.
But it's almost exactly the same, they just look different.
I mean, do we currently provide that somewhere for people, like how we've done it in the past, has there ever been a documented process?
We don't put that out there, no.
All right, I think we should, I think we'll learn.
We can talk about that, but there's.
All right.
Okay. Any other questions so far? Okay, then we have, telephone stays the same, postage is going to go up because the stamps went up, and we are very postage-driven in our department, because we canvass every year, and we send confirmation letters to everyone who registers, registrations have been going up over the last four years, just in general, and the canvases, of course, finally have been going up, we're up to 27,700 registered voters, and four years ago, we were at like 24,000.
We're also mindful of our postage and what we're sending out, by not sending non-voter letters, because we don't seem to have a return if you send.
Right, if you, in other words, if you, yeah, if you leave the town of Enfield, and you're going to another town, in the past, they would send that person a letter saying, you're, you're not here anymore, they really didn't need to know that, because they know where they, they know where they went. We would take them out of the system, but not send them that secondary letter, saving us now 77 cents or whatever it is. So our postage, we're going up $400 through the year. Any questions on postage? No. And then included in that number is the postage itself, and then canvas materials, which is the envelopes for the canvas. We do that like every two years, we order more envelopes, we're just getting through this canvas, and we're going to have to order another batch for another year for the next coming up. Advertising, we have our standard 200 announcement advertising, and under printing, we're staying the same, although, John, we had to figure out, it should say 700.
It does.
But it says 300 there, and I'm a little confused as to why, they probably see 7.7, you guys see 700?
No, we see 7.3. You asked for 7, and it was revised to 3.
Yeah, okay, there's a problem there, so it should be 7, should be the same as this year, I see a 3 up there, but it's under projected actual.
We asked for 7, they revised it to 3, is that what you're saying?
Is that what you did, Chris?
That's what this paper says.
Okay, we have to get canvas envelopes in order to send out the canvas, every year, we currently do not have enough envelopes to send out next year's canvas.
So I need that, I need to raise that $400. No, that was last year, this year, you're 7 and 7.
Okay.
Oh, I see what you're saying. You said it was the same as last year, and according to the paper we're looking at it, went up $400. Right, the projected actual is the projected for the current year. Yes. Yes, okay, then we're good. Right, okay, thank you.
Is that an error?
No, it means we, we didn't buy envelopes this year, and that's why the number's lower, but we're going to have to do it again soon, so. Under travel, we just, we have the $100 in there, and that's if we have to go to a long-range meeting, I mean, $300, to cover mileage. Supplies and materials is a zero, office supplies, we're dropping that down by $400, we did an exhaustive inventory a few weeks ago, just to make sure there wasn't any crazy things we needed to buy, that were getting dilapidated, and we've, we're in good shape, so unless some weird thing happens where we have to go buy something, like some deranged file cabinet we don't, never heard of, then we're, we're not expecting to spend what we spent this year, which was, that's another category, we're expected to give back a couple hundred dollars, so we took out and brought that one down $400. Food, and obviously, the food is related to the, to the elections directly, we were able this year to save money on food, we renegotiated and found a new vendor to supply some food that saved us about 30%, about 30, 35% off the cost of the food, and it worked out great, so we're going to stay with them, we've got a commitment for this coming year, that the prices are going to stay basically the same, I think they're up a dollar a meal, but it's, it saved us a lot of money, but we have to feed these people, you know, they're here 17 hours, 16 hours, 15 hours. So anyway, that, that budget, we dropped from 4,900 to 3,565, again, one election that we're not budgeting for, that we did budget for last year, that's the difference in that, but it's still, it's a little bit down, even though that's a stark number. Any questions on food? And then we have $170 in dues. We did get a, an increase in the price that Rollback charges us to go to conferences twice a year, and we absorbed that in here, but our price went up about 35%, so now it's $160 a convention per person instead of.
Per day.
Per day, yeah, instead of the 110 that it used to be. All right, thank you, Tom, not only did you come in under budget this year, according to what you're predicting you're going to give back, you budgeted 1,000 lower than you did last year, so I think you see the hardship the town's in, and I really appreciate both of you and the work you do, and your numbers reflect that, I mean, it's not a large budget, but everything helps, so I really appreciate the work you guys do, I know you're under a lot of new challenges, as Councilman Ludwig said, you know, most of your increases, along with planning, are stated Connecticut mandates that are unfunded, which again, means the local taxpayer has to pick the tab up, so are there any more questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to add one more thing, there's two items that may possibly be an ask later in the, in the upcoming fiscal year, if they happen, one is the cost for Fermi, to move, if we move early voting over there, we, we got the cost of the line thing taken care of, that's going to be handled internally, there's not going to be a several-thousand-dollar cost to do that, and they can do it within a few weeks, whenever we ask them to, however, there, there's going to be some fix-up, do some public works, some different things we're going to have to do, if we do that, we'll have to talk about, and I don't know what that entails yet. And then if we have an additional election, we will come back to council at the time we learn about it, if there's a referendum that comes up, or a primary, to, to add for that particular event.
Absolutely, okay.
There is also two pieces of legislation that are out there, that if they pass, they could change what we're doing and how we're working, there is an executive order that preserves and protects the integrity of American elections, that could go into effect as soon as this Friday, and there is the SAVE Act that recently passed the House, or recently passed the House and is currently in the Senate, which is, they're both looking at citizenship and verifying citizenship, and whether or not we're going to need to go through our current 27,000 existing voters to verify their citizenship, and how to go about doing that, so.
I, I understand, and that, again, that's out of your control, I mean, I think we're under the illusion right now, the state isn't even going to have us a budget until possibly October, which makes our job, I, I mean, we have to speculate on what the state's going to do, because we have to pass our budget, so if something like that happens, don't hesitate, come back to us, if you find out before we pass the budget, if you could just let Chris know.
Yeah, we will.
We already said something to Mark, at, per request, as a state Connecticut, to talk to legal in your town, what do we do if we're supposed to do something, and they haven't gotten direction on how to do it yet, how do you do it? What's, what is?
How do we register people as of Monday, if this goes through on Friday?
So that's already in the works.
Okay, Mike, John, quick question, sorry, John, they're paying the stipend, educate me, why are we paying Medicare and Social Security if it's a stipend, not a full-time salary?
That's just federal law, basically, they, it's still, we call it stipend because it's paid.
Do you develop that across, remind me, I know we had this conversation last year, do you develop that, or do each department estimate that? Remind me.
Each department estimates, the, the app that comes in from most everybody, based on the payroll projections that HR does.
Yeah.
We then usually adjust it, because it's, it's kind of a long story, and it adjusts it for deductions that happen, and to minimize the number of changes that are needed at year-end, I just have to gross everything up in kind of large dollar amount.
Thank you, John.
Bob, did you have your hand up?
No, I didn't, but we'll ask a question, because George Young is going to ask this. The 500 for telephone, just, I know you give money back to the general fund, is it 500 every year?
Be honest with you, I don't, I could, it could be $10,000 a year, we only get billed 500 a year as our share of the phones, and they never change.
Okay.
You're not the only department that's throughout this, so I just, you can see the same number.
These phone lines are, are administered by the information technology department, okay, so Paul's section has that, but their, the cost, obviously, is associated with each individual department in the town, and we allocate that number based on the number of lines that they have. So my department has like six lines, so my finance administration has, has two lines and a fax, so we get three, my federal, like $125, something like that.
Yeah, and we did that probably 20 years ago, because IT would always get beat up, and it's not even their phones, they're paying for the whole town, so we, to give a better view of each department, they broke out everything.
Makes sense. So I have to get it out there.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Tom.
You're welcome.
Town clerk is the next page in the budget.
I want to give it.
You understand?
Yeah.
What is it?
1500. I just want to be on the screen.
1600.
I want to be cramped. Oh, 1600, I'm looking at what she is, I'm going by this number, okay.
There's everyone.
Hi, Sheila Bailey, town clerk, you can go to the next slide, John. The town clerk department consists of town clerk, a deputy town clerk, and three assistant town clerks, a couple of years ago, the council approved us bringing our clerical people up to assistant town clerks, and on this page, you'll see a little bit of the reason why, and I thank you again. So this year, just in the 10 months year-to-date, we have processed almost 20,000, recorded almost 20,000 land records already, we provided 310 notary services to the public, 160 marriage licenses, 482 burial permits, we, I wanted to give the council a brief idea of the services we provide, because we're really not a project-oriented department, or a service-oriented department, but I also wanted to give you an idea that we are also a revenue-generating department. So we issued 1,786 absentee ballots during the presidential election, we've collected a little over half a million dollars in local town conveyance taxes, and those taxes stay with the town, we don't have to pay the state any of that, we've, over $30,000 in land record copies, and this is the number I really wanted to point out, certified copies, those are certified copies of all vital records, death, marriage, and birth records, and we, to date this year, 100, over $113,000, four years ago, when I started here in Enfield, that number was between 30 and 40,000 dollars, and the main reason for that is we went on a statewide system for death certificates, and now all the funeral homes in our area don't have to go to Hartford to get their certified copies, they come to Enfield, so it's made us much, much busier in our department, but it's also one of the reasons why I needed the clerical people to be able to issue and sign those, where before, they weren't qualified to do so. So, year-to-date, we've collected in state and town fees, 2.5 million, will probably come in around 3.1 million, and generally, the town gets to keep, because a lot of that estate money gets to keep about a third of what we collect. You can go on to the next slide, John. So salaries and benefits, the salary line has not increased very much, but I want to point out that three out of the five FTEs that are included in that figure are in a collective bargaining contract that is being negotiated, ends June 30th, so that figure, that increase is not included in there. Benefits, obviously, is the big driver, they've increased a lot, I also reduced $2,000 that I put in on the presidential election year for temporary help for absentee ballots, that we will not need for municipal election. Go ahead, John. Okay, and our operating costs, the biggest changes here are, under other professional services, those are our land record audits and our code updates when Unicode. Those are our land record audits and our code updates with Unicode. I've decreased it just a little bit. And that is essentially because we are getting more and more e-records, and it reduces the cost. And then the other huge, well, huge for my department, driver, not for TPW. As other purchase services, we've increased it, looks like quite a bit to you, zero to 15, over $15,000. And that is the referendum flyer that we're required to do whenever we have a referendum question. So that budget last year was cut when the council asked us to come back and reduce our entire budgets by 1% after, when we had already presented our budget. So I cut that referendum flyer because I knew we were not having a referendum question. The 15, six, I budgeted for two referendum flyers. One being charter revision questions, if they go to referendum in November, along with the election. And the other one is the school modernization comes to referendum. And last I heard, that was scheduled at first for possibly February and then possibly June. So it would be in the next fiscal year. Postage, even though postage has increased, again, I reduced it because it's not a presidential election year. And it costs, I think it's up to $1.30 now on absentee ballot to mail because of all the packaging in there. And also more recordings of land records. Because once we have, we're in land records, we have to return them to the banks and to the attorneys. And we're getting more and more e-recording, so I reduced that. Go ahead, John. And the next, printing and reproduction, those are our ballots that we print for the elections. That comes out of the Town Clerk budget. And I reduced it because it's not a presidential year. Normally, that figure would have been reduced by significantly more, going from presidential to a municipal. But with early voting and also taking an effect that we'll probably have a separate standalone referendum, I didn't reduce it as much as I normally would. Office supplies didn't increase, but I know my figure looks bigger than a lot of departments for office supplies. And that is really because of land record books. Land record books cost almost $200 if you include the book, the engraving, and the paper, per book. So that's why that figure's so high. And go ahead, John. But percentage-wise, it's not a significant change as far as the breakdown between operating salaries and benefits. But the overall increase is 5.6%, 7%. And last slide. And this is for records management. We are one of the few towns, I believe we're one of three in the state that have a records manager. And the organization of our records shows that we do because a lot of towns really struggle with that. And we have a very good records manager. His, the increase for him is strictly salary and benefits. Everything else, all his supplies flat, he didn't increase it at all. And the salary and benefits is 4.14%. And that is it.
Thank you.
Where I throw it.
Questions? Councilman Ludwig.
Thank you, Sheila. Remind me, when we ordered the, you did the change in the minutes and how the web, you know, how we displayed the minutes on the website, are we still paying someone to take minutes?
We are not. We're doing those all in-house with one of the clerical people that we bumped up to Assistant.
So that's all no part there?
We do it all in our department now.
And what about the website? Is that, was that a one-time cost to you or is that included?
We have a maintenance fee every year. That is taken care of once. The way we do it here in Enfield is when we purchase it, I'm responsible for providing those funds. But the yearly maintenance after we purchase is out of the IT department.
Yeah, I figured, you should make that point that you actually inherited some of that, you know, that issues. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilman Russo.
As far as the advertising, the $5,000, is that mostly for like the public notices that we have to put in the newspapers?
That is public notices. That is 100% public notices we have to put in the newspaper. So the way our chart...
2025, are still required, uh...
We still are required. I mean, if you look at one of our operating lines, we're still required to produce microfilm. All my land records have to be microphoned by state law. Even though we have them digital, we have the physical books. But in case something were to happen to Tamal and we had a fire or something, we're required to microfilm them. So yeah, we're still required, I believe that they have put before the legislature several times to remove that requirement to put it in the newspaper. But the newspapers have good lobbyists.
Yeah, I don't know many people are actually going to the newspaper these days.
Yeah, yeah, but in our charter as well right now, if we, once we pass, like we have an upcoming ordinance. Anytime an ordinance is passed, I have to print it in full. So occasionally, we have four-page ordinances and all of those in the newspaper. It's pretty classified.
That's probably keeping the newspapers afloat.
Yeah. Sure. Here. Ready to go.
And I apologize, I just noticed I lost a zero on that $350.
Sheila, I was going to ask you, the math, fiscal year '25 is 70,000, 246. Fiscal year '26 is 8 to 286. But if you go down...
That is the full, that is the combination of the two pages.
The other page.
The other page. I had two pages for my operating, sorry.
I see, okay, now I get it.
Probably make that clearer.
Because the math wasn't mapping for me.
No, yep.
All right.
Anyone else? Zainan, Sheila, thank you very much.
Yes, I do, I do. I had my hand up.
Compliments about the customer service that you and your staff provide to the citizens of Enfield. And I like the way you think out of the box, coming up with different ways to generate revenue. And obviously, the numbers don't lie, and you bring in some money. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila.
Okay, next, we're going to move on to...
I do, I do have a question.
Go ahead, Cindy.
Okay, my question to Sheila, are you including the Justice of the Peace Services that you provide specifically recording the documents? That takes a lot of time on your staff.
Cindy, do you, do you mean the, just when we swear in and do the certificates and everything for justices?
Yes.
I mean, the cost is included in our office supplies, but we don't collect any fees for JP's. When we swear in notaries, there's a $20 filing fee to the notary. There isn't one for justices. So that's a, that's not a, you know, a revenue generator at all in our department.
No, what I mean is, in your budget, are you including, I noticed you had, you know, notary because you're charging for the notary services. But for JP, when, for example, I come in and give you a certificate to record, are you including that $1 amount in salary? Is that part of the person's salary in your department that's doing that work?
Yes. Yeah, that's right. Yes, and all four, the deputy and the three assistants can, are qualified to do that.
Okay. And I do want to echo Mayor Nelson, while you're doing a phenomenal job as your staff, and we very much appreciate it. Thank you.
All set, Cindy?
Thank, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Sheila. Next, we'll move on to EMS. Section, John?
That'll be the last section in the figure, book, book that you have.
22.
It's a whole separate fund.
Hi, good evening, Eric Rigga at EMS. Thanks for the opportunity to present the fiscal year 2026 budget. So I'll just give you a top overview. This fiscal year, our operating budget was $3,699,000. The proposed fiscal year '26 is $3,745,000 for an increase of 1.24%. That's what you're going to see in your budget sheets in front of you. I did want to note that we entered the budget in early to mid-March. You voted on the EMS contract at the end of March. So there is new contract that's going to raise that 3.7 million. It's going to add $122,000, making the percentage 4.54%. Our 2024 revenue was almost 3.2 million. We're anticipating fiscal year 2026 revenue to be 3 million, and we stay on the lower end. We're also waiting to hear on the governor's budget and Medicaid reimbursement, which may go down a little bit, which is why it's down. Next slide. I didn't, you know, granularly go through all the increases. I kind of went through the highlights. But mostly, our increases are salary. What you'll see is 7,500 or 0.38% when I entered it. That asterisco on the bottom notes the union contract. That increase will go up to $113,600. The health insurance increase is up 4.59%. Other professional services is up 6.67% or $5,000. This is our EMS billing line. So this is a number that we want to increase every year. We pay 3.5% to the company that collects on our EMS fees. Technology services is up 38%, and that's simply the purchase of one radio that we need for an ambulance. When we purchase our ambulances, we move radios to save money. It's a little bit of a gamble. Sometimes that works and sometimes it doesn't. This time, it just, it doesn't. That one radio needs to be replaced. So that's $5,100. Medical supplies, which in your book is medical supplies and other equipment, is an increase of $7,500 or 6.89%. The two drivers to that is our blood program, which I'll talk about in a few slides. And we added IV Tylenol to our medication stock, which is more expensive than fentanyl or morphine. But folks do not want fentanyl or morphine for pain management. They want IV Tylenol. So that is, that's one of the drivers to the increase. And our uniforms increase has gone up. To get to the 1% cut last year was, we cut out of uniforms, so that's coming back in. And the asterisk is the 8,400, which is in the union contract. Next slide, please.
Oops, that was too, sorry.
All right, so a few decreases. We anticipate about $25,000 in fuel cost savings. And we may have some increases, I just don't know yet. It will depend on our CIP items and whether they're approved. If they are approved, we're going to save a little bit of money on our radio repairs and our Lucas CPR device repairs. Next slide. All right, so we started with three CIP requests. The first one was our ambulance that we ask for every year. Thank you to the town manager. We're going to be purchasing that in this fiscal year. We found a new ambulance that is a demo unit. So thank you all for transferring that money. We are working on purchasing that. Our two other items are, we're asking for two Lucas CPR devices, which is what you see on the screen. It's a machine that goes around somebody's body and has a plunger that pushes down on the chest to do CPR. We currently own five of these. Four of them are older technology. They will no longer be supported. So we are trying to purchase two this year and two in fiscal year '27. That's for a total of about $27,000. I would really ask for your support with these devices. Our...
Can I interrupt you?
Yes, for sure.
Why can't we use the drug money for those? What a great idea.
I would have to look into that.
Assuming CPRs perform, a lot of folks will overdose.
I don't know, I don't know the answer.
I mean, but we have, I mean, you have money available that you can use.
It's a thought, you know, we could probably look at numbers and how many are versus how many aren't and whether it would pass or not. That's, that's a good thought.
See, I was, I was thinking the same thing, Mike, for the medication because it's fentanyl and morphine we're getting away from, which makes total sense.
I agree. It's, I can't believe we have fentanyl. It's amazing to me.
So we can look into, if we can use that money.
Check that.
Mr. Ludwig.
Maybe we have, what, 80,000 or so dollars?
And we've been looking for a huge mystery lately.
It'd be a great idea. Sorry, I apologize.
No, thank you. Our save rate when we, after we do CPR is better than the national average. We're at 11%. National average is 7%. We know that part of that is from those Lucas CPR devices. It decreases the paws and chest compressions. And there's a whole lot of, you know, reasons that, it provides safety to the provider. We don't need to do CPR on the back of a moving vehicle anymore. We can be seated and buckled, and the device does it for us. So it really is worth its weight in gold. The other item that we're asking for is 22 portable radios. And the police department will have a similar request. But these are portable radios. They were purchased 13 or 14 years ago. The technology is obsolete. When they break, technology-wise, they're, they are not replaceable. We do pay some fees to replace some of the small parts on them. But it is time. We've used these past their expected life, and that's for $80,000. Just in that photo, too, was EMT Kelly Bergy, and she's with one of our residents and his wife. He was one of our cardiac arrest saves. He comes and does this up, so I thought that was a nice picture. Next slide. And then I just wanted to quickly give you a 2024 review so you know what your money is going towards. We responded to 8,200 call, almost 8,200 calls in 2024. 420 of those calls were to neighboring towns, mostly Suffield and Summers. We have seen an increase in call volume to our prisons in town and to the prison in Summers and in Suffield. The vast majority of our calls, 20%, are just general medical calls, vomiting, weakness, dizziness, diabetics, et cetera, et cetera. 20% are traumatic injuries. 13% are directly related to mental health, substance abuse, and alcohol. And I would say that that number is probably higher, but that's what I could extrapolate from the data. Next slide. So this year, we're really proud to tell you that we added a whole blood program. Out of 25,000 ground ambulance services in the country, we are one of 200 services that carry whole blood. We went live at the end of 2024. We've already given four transfusions with really remarkable results. It made national news. This Journal article got picked up by JEMES, which is a national publication. So that's pretty cool. That is part of our increase in supplies. We do not pay for the blood. We do pay for the tubing device, the cooler, and we expect about $2,000. But we do bill a little bit higher when we give blood, so. Next slide. That's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead, John.
So I go back to the Lucas machines, please. So how much are they each?
For two is 27, so they're about 13, 14,000 dollars. We get a trade in credit. We're going to give the two back.
And so the newer, the ones that we have are technologically not. They function, they don't function?
They function. They are no longer issuing service contracts for them. So all of our medical equipment, our cardiac monitors and our Lucuses, we pay for service contracts. So if they break, we call the company, they come out and fix it. It's much cheaper doing that. They won't issue a service contract for that. They also are running out of supplies to fix them. So we're kind of in this land of the unknown. It's a gamble to keep them.
So, and if we have seven ambulances?
We have eight ambulances.
Eight, okay. So the cost to buy all new Lucuses for all eight ambulances?
So we have five. One is good, one is pretty new. The other four, oh, 14,000 times four is...
Okay. 62, something like that.
56.
Yeah, if you wanted to purchase them all now, I'd love that, but we split it up just for ease.
So if you get an ambulance that doesn't have a Lucas machine and you're in cardiac arrest, then...
That's why we have five right now. If we don't replace them, that could happen. And yeah, you, there would be an equity. We would do manual CPR with our hands.
And the chances of survival is five percent less than three?
Yeah, I would say it would, it would decrease. Yep, you got human error versus a machine.
I suggest getting, replacing this, what seems to be pretty critical equipment on all of them and seeing if we can somehow find a way in the budget to make sure you have... have that equipment on every ambulance. So it's not luck of the draw, you dial nine-one-one, but you're getting that for something else. That would just be my comment on this. Otherwise, you guys do a great job. I see you driving by my house all the time and I know you're doing good work. And so that's my only comment on your budget.
So along with Councilman Santinella, what I would suggest if the council's okay with it is you had said we trade in for the two new ones. Why don't we not trade in, buy the two new ones? So all seven ambulances have them in it. And then as we over next budget, two more, two more, because we're going to continue to do it. And instead of having to buy seven every five years, if we bought two every year, it just gives you newer equipment and a newer ambulance and?
So we own five because we generally never have seven ambulances in service all at one time. We, we could buy two more. I just think some of them would sit on the shelf. I think if we bought four right now to replace the four, that would be, be in really good shape.
Right, so as of right now, ninety-nine percent of your calls, even I would say a hundred, that machine is in the ambulance. There is nobody risking.
Yes, if we don't buy them now and those two that are no longer supported break, then we would run the risk of not having them.
Absolutely, absolutely. I understand.
Yeah.
My next question is the radios. I have heard a little bit of scuttlebutt with the police departments' radios. And the new radio for the ambulance, now we don't have to buy like matching equipment for the cruisers and the handhelds, right? They are all interchangeable, so that doesn't matter.
Right, the ambulance is a little funny because we are required to have an additional radio past what you would think that we have. We need to have a radio that can hold every single channel to talk to every hospital in the state of Connecticut. So it's an extra essentially radio, which is that fifty-one hundred dollars.
Right. And then my last question is, the prisons were mentioned and I have a couple of friends that are COs there and they pretty much mentioned that the prison has pretty much eliminated their ambulance service and are solely relying on Enfield's EMS now. Are they paying their fair share for the use of our service? Because I mean Summers isn't in Enfield because again, this is another cost that they're, if they're not, that's getting pushed from the state onto the local residents of Enfield.
They pay at the Medicaid rate. It's about four hundred and fifty dollars per transport.
And you had said that Medicaid, you're unsure what they're gonna do this year. It could go down?
Yeah, we collect about five hundred thousand dollars from Medicaid. The, there was a proposal in the governor's budget to reduce ambulance reimbursement up to twenty percent. I don't know what that exact number is going to be. It could potentially decrease by a hundred thousand dollars, but I don't know yet.
Right, okay. And along those, along that logic, can you name something that in your department has reduced by a hundred thousand dollars? And I'm just trying to understand the state's thinking because our insurance rates are going through the roof and, you know, your employees are due raises, rightfully so. The equipment's going up, fuel's going up. I don't know what's going down to where the state would think it's okay to lower the Medicaid rates.
We are lobbying. I know Senator Pissel is, has lobbied for the, you know, Medicaid rates to stay, but.
All right, so there is nothing within the department that has decreased at all?
Not to that level.
Okay, that's all I have again. You run a phenomenal department. I know firsthand, you guys saved my life. And if we need equipment for an ambulance, I'm a hundred percent on board with it. And I appreciate everything you and your staff do, Aaron. I really mean it, Mike.
Chris, keep me honest here. We, didn't we, we dealt with this in COVID and the prisons, we had a separate deal with the prisons. They developed, or they, how do I say? I guess I'm going to use my words very carefully here. They took, assumed, I guess, right, some of that role with a different ambulance department because we were going up there every like half hour during COVID. So I guess what has changed, I thought we had that in writing at the time, maybe it was temporary and I apologize, I'm putting you on the spot, but I remember dealing with this and that we weren't going to have to go to the prison much, no matter what they were paying us.
We can, we'll look at this a little further. And that is correct during COVID, we were up there all the time. Then the state brought in some of their own people from UConn to do it. And then I was gone intervening years, but that stopped. Why this is particularly unfair is because not only may they lower the Medicaid rate, but the number of calls, they, they don't have to pay their ambulance service to do it. They dumped hundreds of extra calls on Enfield and now they're going to give us less. So I wouldn't, can't, remember everything, though. They almost, everything is an ambulance service.
Remember the whole definition we went through?
And I talked to Aaron, we, we're going to seek a meeting with the state to try to find some more equitable situation because the Medicaid reimbursement isn't enough to justify the tying up one or two of our ambulances. We have to have more equitable cooperation with the state. They usually are understanding, but.
And I think it's important, Aaron. I, I know you showed your revenue and I think that's part of the issue of when everyone says, you know, this should be self-supporting. I know we've had this debate for years.
Yeah.
I think it's important. I don't, John, where you put it in the budget, you know, to again, to go back to, you did that nice exhibit. Again, we're going, this, this service, we have to decide and we're going to have to have, we're going to have some deficit here. There's no other way. When you're talking about Medicaid reimbursement, Medicare reimbursement, I mean unfortunately, and then folks who just simply can't afford the service. I think, I don't know where it's really shows up in our budget. I know we talk about it, but it would be nice to maybe, you don't have to do it now. Can we come back just to go over how the fund works again? That we are, we do go to collections. I mean, again, just to reassure people, we're not just doing something with their tax dollars. And it's a very important service, but we're also trying to be that whole, and I know the word is, in the eye of a hole, they're fair as much as we can be. And, you know, I think that, I think it would be a nice to re-educate you. We haven't done it in like seven years. I think it's been, and there's reasons why we can't collect some money. I mean, I think I just want, I think it's important for people to understand, because I heard a little bit of this conversation going on to in town, there's reasons why. And it's not because we don't want to collect, it's because there's some laws, I know you can deal with it. There's also, and I think, you know, I don't want to speak for Aaron, but the state, you know, there's different rules versus a private EMS versus a public EMS. And we're taking it, we're, from a law perspective, we are sort of on the, what were no one said? You can use a better word for me. It doesn't work for our day. How's that? Maybe a good way of saying it, some of the reimbursement. So I just think it would be important to sort of spell that out for people that, I mean, it's a great service. We do collect revenue, but there's certain laws and things that we're just never going to be to that, you know, that, that sort of self-sustaining that when the program was set up, but that's okay because there's rules. And again, I didn't realize we're doing this with the prison. And this is, this is news because I thought we had rectified that years ago.
Yeah, this had come up earlier in the budget. And I'll just say before the next question comes, but you're right, Mike, because I know in the beginning we questioned, well, why do we have this lack of, or this hole in funding the EMS? Well, you know, they bring in well over three million. My department, remember, we don't, they don't generate anything, but we need them, right? But we brought in the billing, collection people and all the experts to general governance with Gina and Mike, and they said, there is no EMS department that doesn't run a deficit. There are just, there are certain uncollectibles, the reimbursement rate, we're never going to have it. Now initially, when they proposed it in town, those who were doing it, they said, I think it'll pay for itself. And I thought that was well intended, but it, it never was and it never will be. So we're, we're no different than any other ambulance provider such as our own.
When we brought EMS into town and we took it over, it was for the quality of service. And I think Enfield has hit it out of the park with the quality of service our residents have.
And I think people have to understand, Erin actually does, and I don't want to speak for her because I've been through this with her. She, as our chief, she's actually involved in some of the billing. I mean, hate to say it, you have to ask yourself, is that what you want your chief's doing? But to her credit, she actually gets engaged in some of that. And I think it's, it's very, I mean, like I said, it's very interesting for people to understand it. And so I think it puts it in perspective on why we do some of the things we do. And again, again, I agree, it's a great service and it's something, but there is some disadvantages and we have to stay rep here or maybe, you know, could take care of that. And I think, you know, again, I, I, I think there is ways we can sort of limit that. And in the prisons, and like I said, this is a big deal in my opinion, because I thought we had taken care of this. And you have to ask yourself, a town of forty-four thousand people, our EMS is maybe doing more work going to the prisons than they are helping residents in town. I mean, that's, that's a legitimate debate on how we want our service to work. That's a legitimate debate. I'm not sure that's the point of it either. So I'm not saying we shouldn't do our help, but if, I, I, I know she, but at one point during COVID, we were going to the prisons much more than we were going anywhere else. And that's why we had to step in at the time. So I think people just need to understand some of the perspective because it's important.
Yeah, thank you.
John?
So just to mention to the town manager, would it be possible for you to share with us the number of calls that are going to the prison?
I think she had it in her chart on just five hundred.
Is it?
No, I, it's not in her, that's to mutually other towns, but.
Mutual other towns?
Hundred percentage. So.
Do you know?
Yes, it's, it's not a huge number, but it's about two hundred and fifty calls a year. No, prior to COVID, I think we ran the numbers in twenty eighteen. I think we went up to the prisons like thirty-six times.
Right, it's much different.
So it's, it's a lot when you look at that number. And they, you know, we do collect the reimbursement, it's at Medicaid rate. But it is just, we're putting it on the radar. I will also say with revenue, most people pay their bills. Our revenue just comes in very slowly with a lot of people because we accept payment plans and we accept very low payment plans with folks. If they can pay ten dollars a month, we accept it. What are you going to do, you know? And so that's, that's what we do.
Go ahead, Chris.
So just one more question. So we also have, we give mutual aid and we also get mutual aid, right? And so in terms of, is there a, is there a benefit for us to rely, to be more self-sufficient and rely less on mutual aid? Or is the incremental cost for us greater than relying on mutual aid? Like we're?
There's a break even point, right?
Right, so are we at that place?
We're at, we're in a good spot. We provide more mutual aid than we ask for help. So and it used to be backwards. So we go out more than we ask for other towns to come in. And that's good because then it's, that's billing revenue. And we want, you know, we want our crews to not be running all day nonstop, but we want them to stay going. Yes, that's, you know.
Thank you.
Off that, John?
Yes.
So I got to ask this. Has there ever been a situation since you've been chief where somebody's called for an ambulance and we were not able to provide?
Um, I'm, we will find an ambulance from somewhere. There is situations where all of our vehicles are out on calls. We first in use mutually for East Windsor, then we use Summers, then we use Suffield, but we keep going. And it gets, it just, we just keep going out and out and out until we, until we find one. If they're all out, then we go to Windsor Lox. If Windsor Lox is all out, then we'll go to Long Meadow, then we go to Windsor. So we can keep going. Somebody will be available.
So as chief, do you feel we have the right size department for a town of this size?
Yes.
You do?
Yes.
Okay.
I am waiting to see what happens with the train station. I'm waiting to see what happens with the development at the square because then I think we might need to up staff a little bit if volume goes up. But right now, we're in a good spot.
Okay, thank you very much. And, oh, Steve, did you have a question? No, no. Mike?
Again, this might be a fair question. With, with, with the goal to the prison, is there a way to tie, can we tie it into pilot money? Can it be reimbursed through pilot money?
With the opiate money?
I mean, it might not be a bad place instead of just giving, right, if we're going there, we get pilot money for the prisons. I know it doesn't go up much. It's been probably flat for years, but maybe an idea where we can tie in, instead of paying the Medicare rate, we can get, because again, it's payment of lower taxes. That might not just be a suggestion, because again, it has been an issue for a while, you know. But I thought, again, I don't mean to belabor the point, I thought we had to deal with the prisons.
Right, but the point on that too, Mike, is how come they're not calling Summers?
Right.
They are. They are calling Summers, but Summers is a smaller town, so they generally have one ambulance on during the day. If that one ambulance goes and then the prison needs something, then the mutual aid agreement kicks in and we'll go and, and help. But same thing, if we're all out, they will come in and they'll go to Carl Robinson, which is in our town. And the same thing with Suffield. If Suffield's ambulances are out and McDougal needs somebody, the mutual aid will kick in and it's just kind of this back and forth.
And you don't, you don't see, and I'm just asking, that maybe they pass on a call knowing that there's not a lot of money in it and we'll pick it up? No?
No. You know, the, the calls that we do see at the prison are, every call is significant, but the calls are critical. They have their own healthcare system. They have doctors, they have nurses. So if they're sending it out, it's for something that is serious, that has exceeded their abilities. So it's, it, it, we get an ambulance there quickly.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, again, phenomenal department. You guys run a tight ship. Thank everybody there and, I know, proof, I'm setting proof that you guys know what you're doing, so.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we are moving on to the police department. John?
Section two thousand, plus zero, zero, five. All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you as always for the opportunity to be before you. I have a number of slides which will provide some department overview for you, which I think are important in context. And then a third or halfway through, I'll get to some of the brass tacks that are the budget in particular. Next slide, please. I think it's critically important because it drives so much of the balance of my time with you to provide you with rather the overview, if you will, as to where we are in terms of department staffing. And it's rather Dickensian. I thought a little bit about this. This is my classic. It was the best of times, it was the worst of times. And in the best of times analysis, in the best of times reference, I am thrilled to tell you that we are staffed one hundred and one of one hundred and two positions. That is a fill rate of ninety-nine point zero one percent. And I talk to chiefs that are down five percent, ten percent, fifteen percent, twenty percent of their target staffing level. And a great deal of the credit for that goes to the people in this room. It goes to the people in human resources. It goes to the people at two ninety-three Elm Street. And I am, I am just thrilled and astonished and extraordinarily happy to stand before you telling you that one hundred and one of one hundred and two positions are filled. But the Dickensian reference to the best of times and the worst of times means there has to be another piece of the discussion coming. And that is what you will see on the left side of the screen. Much like my other contemporary chiefs, everyone runs with a deficit within the numbers of positions that are filled. So it'd be really bad if we were down twenty percent and then had twenty percent of our staffing out. And there are departments that are pretty close to those numbers. We are almost perfectly filled, but I still suffer from folks that have, folks that get sick and folks that have babies and folks that get activated to go into the military and folks that get injured at work. I mean, it is a, it is a high-risk profession. I have a lot of younger folks and they're active in the military and they get deployed. I have folks that are younger and they go out because their families are growing. I have on-the-job injuries, a number of people, we've talked about this before at great length, in the training academy. Training academy is in excess of six months long. The FTO program is in excess of four months long. And I wouldn't want it any other way and you wouldn't want it any other way. But the aggregate of those absences is twenty-one positions. Twenty-one positions of my one hundred and two positions. So I'm running with eighty-one bodies that are going out there to work every day. And to put that further in perspective for you, we staff our days, evenings and mids at seven, seven and six in terms of bodies on patrol, not counting supervisors, not counting desk officers, not counting any specialized units. I would be gleeful if I could tell you that those extra twenty-one positions were divvied up amongst those three shifts were an additional seven, seven and six. were divvied up amongst those three shifts were an additional seven, seven and six because then I would never be spending any backfill overtime money. Later on, you'll see an overtime slide. I know that's regularly a concern with the council. When you see that, you're gonna see that what we call shift shortages drives the bulk of my overtime expenditures. And it's because FMLA, unfilled positions, training academy, field training, uh, OJI, extended sick leave, military activations. Uh, I think it very important to get out in front on that issue, on this issue and on the staffing discussion because it will drive so much of what we'll talk about in the slides that follow. In the green, you will see, um, an observation for you, dare I would say, a suggestion, uh, perhaps an admonishment for you. Should we get to the point, should you get to the point where you've got to make some hard decisions? Within my operational budget, which is frankly down to bone, there's not any more to give on the operational side. If you were to say that we needed to save money, I could do that, but it would have to come at the cost of positions and I could do that. Please understand if a patrol position is eliminated, I have to backfill for that position on overtime. So it does not produce that roughly one hundred thousand dollar cost savings per position. As a result, if you wish to save any money, and let me be clear, I'm not encouraging this, but a hundred thousand dollars per position in savings would be achieved by cutting from the specialized units. That's a very unattractive discussion, but it's about the only place in the budget where I could legitimately say to you, SRO, detective, traffic, those are about the only places where there's any more flex within my budget. Next slide, please. All right, uh, what is your money doing for you? I use twenty twenty four calendar year. I thought it was the most effective approach rather than trying to bridge uh, numbers that covered between two years. The numbers are up and I guess I'm both proud of that and a little frustrated by that, but it is to be expected. Fifty thousand and nine calls for service in calendar year twenty twenty four. The easy math, one hundred and thirty seven point one, point oh one calls per day, uh, per day. Um, and sometimes it's a vehicle lockout that takes two minutes to resolve. And sometimes it's a decades-old sexual assault and it takes months to resolve. Uh, sometimes it is a parking complaint. Sometimes it's a robbery or a kidnapping or an assault with a weapon and it drags on for days, it drags on for weeks, it drags on for months. Uh, I certainly won't use your valuable time or mine to read the balance of the slide to you, but I thought you would find at least some of those major categories interesting. Arrests, accidents, uh, and some of those are two-car accidents with minimal injury. Some of those are fatal accidents. Some of those are accidents where the offender fled from the scene and now we've got to put the time into tracking that person down, locating their vehicle, getting their information and arresting them. Uh, narcotics investigations, protective custody, the overdose numbers are still very troubling. Uh, I'm I'm both excited by and disturbed by sixty five non-fatal overdoses in our community in that calendar year. In the category of regionalization, I hope you are as pleased as I am. Uh, CREST and Metro Traffic is regionalization at its core. The K-9 program continues to be a model, uh, within the state. Um, and then two of our newer technologies, stop sticks and the Star Chase equipment uh, have been used quite successfully, uh, over the course of the last year. I would ask you, uh, to put a, uh, a slate bookmark mentally on arrests and protective custody because those two, uh, in total, you're gonna see those again, uh, in a very important additional slide. Next slide, please. So I believe there is a perception, uh, rather a misperception, uh, within our community, I fear, within our state, I'm sure, and within our nation, I'm positive about police use of force. Uh, there's the perception that the police are out and, you know, they need to go back and 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 get extra bullets before the shift is over. Uh, and that's an exaggeration for dramatic effect, but you get my point. If we take a look at the fifty thousand and nine calls for service, I would offer to you that two thousand and sixty seven of them are times where someone dressed like me had to make someone do something that they didn't want to do. And that's the aggregate of arrests plus protective custody. So if we take a look at that two thousand and sixty seven of the fifty thousand calls for service, it is only four point one percent of the time where we had to compel someone to do something, if you will, largely against their will. Of that number, only forty three times, so forty three out of two thousand and sixty seven, forty three out of fifty thousand zero zero nine, only forty three times did force have to be used to achieve that objective. And furthermore, of those forty three instances, over sixty percent of the time, empty hand control techniques, non-weapon type tools, were used to control that individual who didn't want to do something they had to do. Uh, I am extraordinarily proud of this community and extraordinarily proud of that department, our department, when I'm able to offer data like that for your consideration. Next slide, please. And against that backdrop of the overall fifty thousand and nine calls for service, and I set this up deliberately, so in just a moment, John is gonna have to hit the, uh, enter button one more time. Motor vehicle enforcement continues to be a significant concern of your constituents, of your residents, of the folks in this community. That number is higher than last year, eight thousand three hundred and eleven motor vehicle stops at those ninety five locations and others, twenty two point seven seven motor vehicle stops per day in addition to all those other calls for service that officers are engaged in. And you know, sometimes it's a, it's sometimes it's a written warning under a grant for a seatbelt violation. And sometimes it's that incident from a couple of weeks ago where the wanted people, armed people fled and got away from Massachusetts, S.B. and their helicopter followed them into Connecticut. And your infield police department got that car stopped out on ninety one with no injuries to anyone, traffic only minimally inconvenienced and a couple of serious individuals, uh, apprehended. Next slide, please. Uh, I'm also proud, uh, and I will tell you it is something that in my last life was not as much a priority because it couldn't be as much a priority. Uh, the state police staffing just did not necessarily allow it. Local police staffing calls for this. The community very rightfully wants to have that community interaction, that community outreach efforts. I would offer to you, uh, again, a bit of a humble brag here, but the only thing that we are not doing for community outreach, the only thing we are not doing for community policing is that which we haven't thought of yet. If someone asks us for it, we're out in the forefront, the CPOs, the crime prevention officers, the traffic division, coffee with the cop, car seat installation. If someone asks for it, we are happily providing that as a service. Next slide. And I also think it's extraordinarily important to build those community relationships. You know, we are in the business where unfortunately I can't always make everyone happy and 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 it's unfortunate, but it's true. In terms of the positive relationships, almost three million views to our webpages last year. Almost three million views between our Facebook and Instagram. I know many of you follow and I know many of you have been out for things like the Christmas light pageants. Uh, you know, pi- uh, porch pirates. We pushed that out last year. I've got some of the most creative individuals that run our social media team. Ten, fifteen years ago, when law enforcement first started making use of social media, sort of my generation, we needed to be dragged into that. We needed to have a comfort level that we were gonna vest the ability to speak on behalf of the department into some of our twenty-somethings. I was gonna give them a phone and they were gonna be posting. And it wasn't gonna be me standing at a podium. They were gonna do it in the middle of the night. And my gosh, has it been an incredible success. Next slide, please. And then we get to the nitty-gritty. Then we get to some of the budget numbers and of course, ultimately, the reason why we are here. My budget from last year to this year, and I I wrote a note to myself and then I put air quotes around the word because I wanna make sure this is not poorly received. My budget is up merely, and that's the air quote word, because it's very hard to describe almost half a million dollars of taxpayer money as merely. But in the big picture, my budget is up four hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars, which is only two point eight percent. Now, I would put an asterisk next to it. This does not reach the EPEA contract settlement. Uh, and I don't wanna speak out of school, but I think that we are, uh, in a good place on that. As I stand before you today, that four hundred and sixteen thousand dollar increase is largely, almost exclusively, I got a little bit of horse trading in the budget. Some items came out, some items went back in. But that four hundred and sixteen is being driven by three items. About half of that is my healthcare cost increase. And that's troubling, but it's very largely, i- it's exclusively beyond our control. Fifty two thousand, at least as we stand here today, is the increase to my salary account. And that is because items like, uh, minimum wage went up. So we're talking about the crossing guards. We're talking about the FLSA-type payments that go to the K-9 handlers for some of the care that they provide. We're talking about increases that went through a couple of my CSAs. It is only twelve point seven percent of the increase, fifty two thousand, seven hundred and one dollars. And I went slightly out of order there and I did it deliberately because I perceived that there might be questions on this item. The third item that accounts for about one-third of my overall increase is our Axon body worn camera and in-car camera program. You will be surprised, I suspect, as I certainly was, to look up and see a calendar that said, it's the spring of twenty twenty five and to realize that I came before you. Mr. Bronson was was a was a was a leader and an advocate uh, because the General Assembly said, you're not getting a choice anymore. In the summer of twenty twenty five and in the legislative session that followed, body worn cameras became a mandate. Um, and they, and the state gave you thirty percent of the first year cost as a rebate and the rest went to all of you. Well, we locked in a five-year contract. And in speaking to people like Paul Russell, five years is an eternity in the tech world. We got a five-year locked-in price. Paul offered me an estimate that tech tends to go up about ten percent a year, every year. And we have never gone up on that over the course of the last five years. Additionally, you will remember that because it was an unfunded mandate and because we were outside of the budget cycle, we got the minimum number of cameras that we could get away with. We got about ninety five at that point. Ninety five was barely enough. Well, the department has grown and the ACOs say we really want the cameras as well. Um, and, uh, uh, the auxiliaries, we give the cameras to as well when they go out. So that number of ninety five has increased to a hundred and five. If I increase by about ten percent and if tech goes up ten percent or so every single year, we've gotten an estimate from Axon that's gonna, it's gonna lock in for another five years. It's the best price that I can get. But that raises the cost of my program with the body worn cameras, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. Those three items are what gets me to that four sixteen. I hesitate to use the word mere, but I'm very pleased to only be up two point eight percent sans the EPEA contract, uh, which is a separate, a separate area of discussion. Next slide, please. I didn't anticipate that you would, uh, wish, uh, but I'm certainly happy to go into whatever degree of detail you wish, uh, at a granular level to talk about these items. What I want you to know is that myself, the deputy chief, the captains, uh, the folks that serve in in some of our more administrative tasks, they are held accountable, they are held responsible for their individual budgets uh, down to this granular a level. What are the items that you're looking at? What are the items that we look at? I get reports from my people. Where are we in the year? Where should we be at this point in the year? Are we high? Are we low? Why? And can it be offset anywhere else? Next slide, please. In totality, where does that money go? The lighter blue color is the salary portion. That's about two-thirds of the overall expenditures within the agency. The darker blue portion is the benefits portion. That's a little less than one-third and it is that very small slice that is the operational portion of the budget. That is everything from gasoline to uniforms, to bulletproof vests, to training, uh, to the physical equipment that we have to have, to to K-9 food. It's all in that section. Um, and and last year, you know, you had to make tough choices. And this year, you had to make tough choices. But the one percent of the overall budget last year came out of the green. So it's really, I'm really in a situation where, and I'm I'm not, I don't want this to sound snarky in any way, should you, uh, have to make tough choices as to the PD, it would really largely, I could need to have a staffing discussion with you. Next slide, please. Overtime is always a source of concern, uh, and I understand why that is. So I took the liberty of of, uh, screenshotting for you how overtime gets broken down, how it gets coded, and I would emphasize, as I have emphasized for you, that any overtime utilization has to be approved by a supervisor and we track the overtime utilization and we stay on top of the overtime utilization. So what you're looking at here represents the first three quarters of the current fiscal year. Of that number that was spent to date, I would offer to you that thirty five thousand, uh, roughly is fully reimbursed. Thirty seven thousand is what I would call a town-directed expense. So that's going to be a town council meeting. That's going to be a Thompsonville walking patrol. That's gonna be the Scannick River State Park. Uh, and I'm happy to staff those, but obviously, at the end of the year, they do, they do aggregate up. We also have what I've always thought to be a rather misplaced number, at least in terms of its presence in the overtime budget. About ninety thousand of the overall, uh, number that you're looking at is contractual holiday pay. And it it, it's a contractual benefit, but it shows in the overtime account because that is how it's, that's how it's tracked and that's how it's coded. When we take those numbers out, the overtime utilization divided by the number of eligible employees breaks down to seven thousand, seven hundred, seventy-four dollars per person. So, you know, the Hartford Current and, uh, the media and the J.I., uh, we see these articles every year where they love to talk.
What, what do you call that name?
Law enforcement in general, sir. Law enforcement in general. Where the media likes to do articles that likes to talk about law enforcement high earners. And I do have people that make good money. And they make good money because they go out and they work on their days off at construction jobs. And they go out and they work and they stand around rather than be home with families at a hole in the road. Or they work at a basketball game or a dance or some special duty job. That's money that they work and they earn for it. It passes through you from the vendor before we get to the officer. It's not town money. And and in any, if anything, if anything, that money actually also generates some funding for the town because of the 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 extra charge, if you will, that that's, uh, allocated to the vehicles if they go out to a scene. Seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars of overtime per person. I guess I just wanna emphasize, no one's getting rich on the town overtime account. Next slide, please. You heard earlier from Chief Rigget the issue with the portable radios. Uh, this is a one-and-done expenditure. This is not one where you will see it, uh, in a future year. But as she very accurately pointed out, our portable radios are about thirteen years old. Uh, they are no longer serviced by Motorola. If they get sent back, they are returned. We do not fix these any longer. And we've gotten more than their expected life, which I'm told was about seven, eight, maybe nine years at the outside. So portable radios that are thirteen years old, in consultation and discussion with Mr. Bronson, uh, we wanted to put this very specifically, uh, on your radar screen. Our sworn officers, our auxiliary officers, our animal control officers all need these portable radios. They have to be recharged, uh, at the end of every shift. Each portable has an individual radio identifier on it. It's really not possible to share them. And if we make a purchase one time, we can do so at approximately four hundred and one thousand dollars. That is included within my, uh, CIP ask for you within the budget as well. Next slide. Happy to answer questions or concerns. Thank you.
Okay, I have a few questions.
Yes, sir.
On one of the original slides you put up, you said that any, any cuts to be made this year would have to come from staffing.
Yes, sir.
And you pointed out a few departments that they'd be cut from. If if this council said to you, you need to cut, what department would you pull from? And the reason I'm asking is because each one of those departments, every one of us council members have a particular group. I'm loyal to SROs.
Could you put that slide up so they can see?
Yeah, yeah, second slide. Yeah, I I'm loyal to the, um, seat, uh, community police officers because every time there's a budget crunch, we cut them. And then we have problems in Thompsonville and we're always reacting. And I think we have done strides to get community involvement in Thompsonville and to pull the plug on it. So what would you say? Because that's mine, but i- if you had to pick one of those departments, which one would you pick?
So I I'm happy to answer that. Let me set this up properly if I could. The reason that I identify those specialized units as the only place where you could really caught to enjoy a cost savings is because if we value a position, cut to enjoy a cost savings is because if we value a position, wages and benefits at roughly a hundred thousand dollars, and we think about position X as being a patrol position, if we cut that body from patrol, I'm gonna have to backfill for that position within the patrol force anytime that the absence of that position, patrolman X, patrolperson X, drops that shift below minimum. As a result, you don't receive a hundred thousand dollar cost savings. You might receive only a sixty thousand dollar cost savings because I had to spend forty thousand dollars in overtime. So in the category of not being, you know, disingenuous to you, I have to say to you, the only way to have a position worth a hundred thousand dollars is to take it out of those specialized units.
Understood.
With that introduction out of the way, I would, I would very respectfully have to say this. At about this time last year, this council was having a similar discussion about whether or not private schools should have to pay for their own services if they wish to have that service. And after some back and forth and a lot of very energetic discussion, involvement from the law firm, opinions that were offered about state statutes, what they read and what they meant, I think that would be the first thing that you would want to revisit.
Okay, it's the SSOs or SROs at the private school.
I think that would be, if you had to get to that point, I think that would be the easiest town council fix, even understanding that it would cause some consternation within other constituencies within the town. You could take away a detective. If you go from ten detectives to nine, each detective's workload just went up by ten percent. You could take away a CPO. They serve an invaluable purpose over there. There's only four. If you cut them by one, you're cutting by twenty-five percent. You could take away an officer from traffic, and frankly, that wouldn't produce an immediately noticeable impact. However, I think your phones would ring that much more because that is a quality of life issue for many of your residents.
So I asked the question for the explanation, because I knew it was gonna be pretty much what you said. I'm not into cutting any of the officers, and in actuality, can you pull up the breakdown of the overtime again, please?
Should be about the eighth slide in. Maybe a little deeper than that.
So right there. So down towards the bottom, you have shift shortage, which seems to be your biggest line item for overtime at five hundred and sixty-three thousand. So I'm gonna go the opposite. What do you think if we hired two more officers as floaters, if it's even possible, would that reduce that number by at least the salaries it would cost to hire those two positions? They're floaters, so they could do traffic patrol, whatever you need them in, whatever shift you need them in. Would that help reduce that number?
It certainly would help. It certainly would help. Are they going to save more than their salaries? Is each one gonna save, between salary and benefits, a hundred thousand dollars each? You know, we know that in order to put, I mean, this is, we all know this formula, right? In order to put one person on, and I'm not saying you're saying this, but in order to put one person on twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five, you need about five people in order to do that, because each person would work forty hours a week, five times four is two hundred, and there's one hundred and sixty-eight hours if you're covering one job throughout the course of the week. There's an algorithm for it, right? So when we add people on, the overtime number does drop down, but to say that they're going to save more than the cost of their salary and benefits, I don't think they're gonna save more than the cost of their salary and benefits.
So this is, this is...
Can you just clarify the question? Because I think, I know what you're saying. So you're not saying an additional person. You're saying, "We're short, first shift on Monday, this person comes in. We're short, second shift on Tuesday, that person comes in."
Floaters.
That's what you're saying. I don't think that that's what you, that's the question, that's what it's about.
Is that the same? I don't think that's the same.
It's a floater position. So you would start with the PD, and you don't have a set shift.
Yep.
You don't have a set department.
Yep.
And as your seniority grows, you would fill in and end up in one of those positions.
I'm just, I'm just, I just want, to interject here. The police department is different. It kind of defies common sense because of what he said, the shifts and the people, and Steve can also say we have union considerations that he's gotta comply with on the descriptions. Not saying it's impossible to do, but it's not like going to the water pollution control, we had a couple people, or custodians, we cut a couple people. Police, it's the same issue we run into with the cars. Yeah, you could have less, but you'd run them into the ground any year, so it takes some more thought. We could have them look at that, let them assess a little bit, and we're still in the budget process, and we could come back with, maybe you could look at some numbers. And I don't know, Chief, to your point and yours, John, is there a point in your algorithm that two wouldn't do that? And I mean, it sounds crazy, but with four, you might say, "You know what? It sounds ludicrous, but if you increase by the four, that gives us, because we can cover twenty-four hour shift, you could save more." Maybe you could just look into that for us and give us those kind of answers. Please.
So the problem is, every one of us in here have heard about the police department's overtime, okay? And that's why I'm asking the questions now. We're on TV. I want people to hear, you know, yeah, there's a hundred and two officers, but when you minus out all those officers that are not actually on duty, we're at eighty-one, and we still have to pay those other twenty people. And that's why the overtime is a million, twenty-five thousand dollars. You broke down what we're reimbursed for and stuff, so it's great, but it is a large number, and I know you don't like that number, Chief. And if there is, at some point, we can tip the scale, and I'm just using the word "floater" to, like Councilman Santinella said, and then, you know, as they move up in seniority, they would take a full, regular position, and the new guy would be a floater, however you did it, but just something, because if we're spending a million dollars on overtime, I look at that, we're paying for ten positions now. So if we could pay for eight and save two, we're two hundred thousand ahead of the game. And that's all I'm asking you to look at. I know it's a lot right now. Maybe you have. I mean, the union, we're in negotiations in great terms. I don't want to change any of that, but maybe have a discussion with them and see what they think. Just something.
We should look, because this has come up every single year. I've been here for thirty-five years. Every chief and every council has been frustrated by this.
I'm not frustrated. I just, if we can get an answer and help you at the same time with permanent staff, then let's stop. Let's do something about it.
Absolutely.
So, yeah.
Well, the only thing is, and we've been here for a number of years, and every year the overtime comes up, and every year we look at, okay, we're gonna hire X amount of police officers, and we've done that, but we always run into the issue that you had up there with, you know, pregnancies and...
Military...
All of that. So, you know, technically, we could hire four, all right, but that doesn't mean that other number isn't gonna go up. So you're gonna be like, you're gonna be tipping...
There's gotta be a certain percentage, like at a hundred officers, how many is the percent that the chief would expect, even Aaron, to be out for whatever reason? And looking at this, it's twenty percent. I don't know if that's how it is with Aaron.
The other way to think about it, and this may be helpful, so we have a certain number of, so non-specialized units, patrol people, because if somebody in a specialized unit takes the day off, they're not being backfilled for it, that's fine. Days, eaves, mids, there are a certain number of what we would call bidable positions that are available, fourteen, fourteen, and thirteen, I believe what it was. So fourteen, fourteen, and thirteen, if nobody was out of work and nobody ever took any time off, then, other than their regular days off, then you would have roughly two-thirds of fourteen officers on patrol every single day. So for the sake of easy math, ten of fourteen are available, and every shift is covered, and it's actually covered plus three. I'd have plus three on a given shift. But what happens is, people are entitled to their earned leave time, so that's coming off of that number, and you also have all those things that you saw on the earlier slide. I say this only to be comical, not serious, not serious about this. I find it much easier to be a patriot on the Fourth of July and honor the good men and women, Memorial Day, Fourth of July, that have served our nation, than it is for me to be a patriot when I'm looking at the schedule and I see somebody gone for a deployment. It's much easier for me to write a card congratulating somebody on the birth of a newborn than it is when I have to sit down and look at the schedule and say, "Well, that person's gonna be out for this much longer." It's much easier for me to call somebody and say, "Hey, I'm sorry about what happened at work. I'm sorry you're injured. You did good work. We'll be here when you get back. Just get healthy." Then I have to go and look at the schedule and see the hole that that's created. That is really what drives that shift shortage number. Fourteen, fourteen, and thirteen, we could absorb days off all day long and never spend any of your overtime, but it's the loss of some of those other positions, state statute, federal statute, the contract, and just being a good employer that causes us to run below minimum.
Right. Well, like I said, we're spending the money now. We're spending the money on ten more positions, and if we can utilize that money in full-time positions versus overtime, I would be open for the discussion. I know it's not as simple as that, but I'm not willing to cut an SRO, an SSO, a CPO, a detective. I'm not. I mean, this town is safe, and every time I see that we join the state of Connecticut on the shoplifting task force, I love it. I want people to know, not in Enfield, and that's because you guys make it happen. So I'm open for discussions on that. Councilman Russo.
Yeah, so, believe it or not, I was tasked with some research about this about ten years ago, and law enforcement, police jobs is one of the only professions where it actually might be cheaper to pay somebody time and half in overtime than actually hire another employee. So if you had first shift, you had car five that was open the entire year, five days a week, if you paid the one-point-five in overtime, there is an argument to be made. Instead of hiring a new employee with her family, fringe benefits, insurance, how much does it cost, Chief, to send someone to the academy for seven months of, six, seven months of pay, then another FTO before the recent calendar? And then you gotta give the FTO probably a stipend as well.
And they gotta quit those people. Yeah, yeah.
So it actually is one of the professions. Now, to what the mayor said, if you wanna maybe meet a happy medium here, because maybe you don't wanna wear officers out, you don't wanna be paying them overtime and, you know, maybe working eighty, ninety hours a week where they're not exactly a hundred percent at their best. If you wanna try to meet a happy medium, you're saying a floater. I call it kind of a relief list, where you pay some overtime, but you also cover some shifts by having additional people. I did that for the first couple of years of my career. You know, five days a week, some days I'd be working second shift, filling gaps, some days I'd be working third shift, and then after four weeks, I'd be, you know, they'd give me, I think they had to give me at least seventy-two hours' notice, but that was something we had to do. Now, is that something that Enfield P. does? Is there some contractual language with that?
An individual does get assigned to a slot. However, we do, you know, like a days and eaves are it's.
Right.
But we do have the ability to do what we call bumping, and bumping isn't always real popular with the rank and file, but we still have to do it. So if eaves happen to be plus one and days happen to be sure, we would bump that person, so it's almost a floater concept from eaves down to days. Now, we try to be sensitive. We try to be sensitive to, you know, within reason, a personal situation, getting involved in bumping people on mids is very disruptive to sleep cycles, but we do to some degree have what it is you're describing. We slot them, but then we do have that ability to bump. So it's almost achieving something very similar to what you're describing.
Yeah, and it's usually, it's a brand-new officer, you kind of pay your dues, you're a little person, a total employee, I get that, but it's still way better than, I know a lot of departments are ordering officers in. I know in Hartford, now we ordering officers in during their five days, we're ordering on their regular days off, which ultimately, that's what you wanna avoid. So bumping the lesser of probably all the evils, as opposed to telling an officer, a veteran officer, "Yeah, Saturday, I know you already worked five days, and you got your kid's baseball game and birthday parties, but you're being ordered in."
Could I be so bold as to ask, do you know what the percentage that you're filled right now happens to be?
Were filling it?
Yeah. No, no, the percentage of authorized numbers that you're filled, authorized, a target staffing level, how many positions are filled? Percentage-wise?
Not a lot. You talking about Hartford?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, Chief, we're hiring like thirty-five overtime shifts in patrol a day. Yeah, so we're maybe sometimes meeting fifty percent.
And granted, a much, much larger agency, but...
So with that, talking about your patrol staffing, because you talked about if you had to, right, you had to cut, if you were your specialized units, your detective bureau, CSOs, SROs, traffic, especially with all the complaints we're getting, and I'll probably bring one up, another one up tomorrow at our town council meeting, but the traffic division, you definitely can't cut there. Detective bureau as far as Thompsonville, fentanyl issues, we know from the DEA agent that came in and spoke about all that stuff, definitely wouldn't wanna cut there. Now, for patrol staffing, seven, seven, six, so it's seven first shift, seven second shift, six on third shift. Are those mandatory minimums?
They are.
All right, so if someone calls in sick and it goes from seven, the first shift goes from seven to six, you're required to hire.
Correct. Yes, sir. And those are bodies on patrol, including supervisor?
Now, do your canine units, do they count as one of the, okay. And your canine units, they're taking primary calls for service, accidents on stuff?
Okay, sir.
What about supervisors? Supervisors are not counted and...
Supervisors are not the seven, seven, six, no.
Are they still taking calls for service, helping out them?
So the headquarters commander is inside the building, and the field supervisor, when there is one, is out on patrol.
All right, so about a hundred thirty-seven calls a day, so each officer's doing about seven calls per shift?
Yes.
Roughly.
Roughly.
And when you list the number of calls, are we talking about nine-one-one calls, calls for service that are coming in, or is that also self-initiated?
Anything that gets a CFS number, so it could be self-initiated, it could be, and it could be a car lockout, it could be, I don't wanna drink, so it could be a homicide.
Right.
It could be a neighbor dispute, it could be a sexual assault that's decades old. Fifty thousand, zero, zero, nine total calls for service.
And you alluded to the private jobs. Are we not making really any money off the private jobs from the vendors as far as after paying the officer, any additional administrative fees?
You're making...
We talked about the cruisers.
Making the fee on the car.
That's it.
And there is a dollar fifty, dollar fifty per hour charge as well, Jeff.
That's it, though? That's all we're making?
Yeah, it's a dollar fifty per hour per officer.
All right, so what are we charging? So Eversource wants to hire an officer for tomorrow. What do we charge in Eversource?
Four-hour minimum.
Okay.
And then every, everything past the four-hour minimum is a half-hour increment.
But how much do we charge? So if you do an eight-hour day, how much do we charge?
The extra job rate you're looking for?
Yeah, what do we charge?
It's about three hundred dollars per four-hour job.
I can find it if you want to give me a minute.
I think the rate right now is about seventy-five and change an hour.
And the officer, do they make their, do they make their rate of pay?
No.
Or it's a standard?
It's a contractual rate. Everyone makes the same rate on an extra job.
Okay. I mean, I know there's instances, Hartford, we're making a hundred fifty, two hundred, two hundred fifty dollars a job, and, you know, off each job and times three hundred sixty-five days a year, how many jobs, I mean, it's actually a good revenue source that we have, so I don't know if that's something we can look into if we're lower than some of the other towns as far as what they're charging.
Seventy-six, forty-one per hour.
That's the dollar fifty, yeah.
Yes, yeah, and then with the cruiser, it jumps to ninety-six, forty-one, is the current number. If there's a contractual resolution, that will go up. And the town rate is less. So a basketball game, a football game, a town construction job.
So you just look in other towns and see how we compare? Have we ever?
We have, especially with the vehicles, because we looked at that some years back to make sure, and we raised it, and we put it in a special account for place vehicles. But it always, it's all perishable information, so we can look again, and if it should be adjusted upward, and it's a recommendation, then we will consider it and let you know that.
I mean, listen, I think the town should be getting a pretty good cut administratively. I mean, you all have, officers be injured, you have workers comp, you have fringe benefits, I mean, there's hazardous conditions, I mean, we should be getting more than just what the vendor's paying. There should be ten percent, fifteen percent probably built in.
I mean, I'm not adverse to that. I think that's probably a common decision.
Maybe you can share with us what Hartford's doing.
Yeah, I probably could get some information for you, but, yeah, so it's, I think seventy-six, forty-one times eight, I think I'm math correct, it's a little over six hundred dollars. Some other towns are a bit higher. Maybe something to take a look at as far as maybe bringing revenue in. Now, it may not go right to the department, maybe goes to the general fund, but that is a help.
I'll say it, Jeff.
Yeah, I'll say it, thanks.
Councilman Mangini.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
Good presentation. As always, I support you and all of our Find Enfield PD officers. I certainly will not support reducing your staff. Again, you're, you know, the expert in that field, and I wanna bring everybody out of the weeds for now and let, you know, you do your job as effectively as you have. and let, you know, you do your job as effectively as you have. We do have wonderful, you know, results here in Enfield. Like Mayor Nelson pointed out earlier, we're very, very fortunate to have you at the lead. The question that I do have, though, is about the radios. I was here at the onset of this radio situation with the MSPD and the fire. Those radios are in fact getting old and older. How can you, or will you swap them out or get them repaired to suit the current climate that we have? Are we working on that piece?
So if the new radios are purchased, they would come in, they would get programmed, our individual call signs would be added to them, and then the actual issuance would just be swapping out the old and bringing in the new. So that piece, I would not anticipate would be problematic. It's just, you know, it's the economic decision about how long you folks wanna push this off. As I stand here today, I have enough radios, but it's getting close. We are just about at the, go to eBay to find the replacement parts for them. We've gone in thirteen years.
What I would just add, Cindy, is that this is a critical matter. This is the lifeline of that officer in the street. And it's the lifeline to the person, perhaps having a heart attack and family talking to the EMS. It has to be done. I wouldn't have put it in if we didn't need it, and I would cut anything else on the CIP. And I don't think I have to advocate. I think you all understand the seriousness of it. We have to do it.
Yeah, you were there with me. You were there with me, Chris, when we had those meetings at the onset of the radios, so you know the value and the importance of making sure that they're up to where they're supposed to be.
What? I'm having a hard time hearing you. She's talking about years ago when we bought these radios, 'cause you, I, her were in the room.
Oh.
No, 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 years ago.
Years ago, and they're already jumped.
I really, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you, Cindy. Go ahead, Cindy.
Thank you. Thank you, chief.
All right, Councilman Hendrickson.
Just like, I got two questions on the overtime. Again, I see $35,000 reimbursed. I see $35,000 reimbursed. Is some of the, July 4th, is that reimbursed?
The reimbursement is, I'm sorry, I apologize.
That's all right.
The reimbursement is the state money. It's the clicker ticket. It's the distracted driving. It's the DUI enforcement. The Fourth of July is an in-kind donation of the town to that event.
All right, Scannick River for $10,000?
Not reimbursed. That's been a directed town expense that precedes me.
All right. One other question. Crest had sixteen calls. How many were Enfields?
I didn't get that. I don't know. I would say, you know, a handful of them were one of the bigger communities, but certainly not the majority of them. There are, you know, nine, ten communities within Crest, and this is the concept of regionalizing or regionalization within a swap or tactical function.
I believe, Mr. Hendrickson, I don't know if you received it, but during the year, didn't we, you do a overview of Crest, the towns that were members, how many units and the calls, so we can get that again and send it out to you all?
Yeah, it's not many. I just wanted to see. And is that all overtime on Crest?
Not necessarily. I mean, some of it might be. If somebody was on duty for training or a call-out, then they would simply go as they were assigned. If they were off-duty and they had to respond, then that would trigger overtime.
Why doesn't a state trooper go with a prisoner to the hospital?
The department... The State of Connecticut will not take responsibility for the prisoners until after they are arraigned, until after they are presented, and they cannot be presented until they are medically cleared. The court won't take them, the marshals won't take them. And if I had to identify for you an overtime expenditure that screws me through the roof, it is babysitting a prisoner at a hospital from Friday, and you know, I don't even need to emphasize the weekend, because it could be during the week. And if they're not medically cleared, the marshals won't take them, and the court won't arraign them until they are cleared enough and ready to go. Where we can, we make smart decisions to give somebody like a non-schirity bond and say, "Sign here, make sure you go to court a week from Tuesday." But where somebody is on a fraud warrant, a rearrest warrant, where someone's on a domestic violence charge, where we cannot cut them loose, we babysit them, and you pay for that 24 hours a day.
And every once in a while, they'll do an arraignment at the hospital, but that's very rare, because you gotta bring the stenographer, the judge, the clerk, you gotta bring the whole show to the hospital, and that's very rare that he'll do that.
So, I think you might have just cleared that up. That's not State of Connecticut prisoners. That's your prisoners.
We've arrested them. They haven't been presented in court yet.
I was misunderstanding that. That's on us.
Yes, sir.
Mike, you...
Go ahead.
General, this is for Chief, for John, the twenty-two grand for Fourth of July, is that separate than what we're in the other fund that I can't find on my...
That is included in the celebrations and special events account.
So is that included in that 93,000? I think that was in that account if I read it quickly? Or is it 22 in addition?
That would be part of the, I think that's what it was, 93,000.
I think it was 93,000. Can't find a page, sorry.
Yeah, it's in the...
I'll manage it.
It is on page, well, the code 7,000 towards the end of the general fund.
Yeah.
Yeah, celebrations and special events, 93, it is part of that.
So explain, sorry, if it's in that fund, then why is it separated?
He's tracking what his...
Okay, I got it. I got it.
It's just through the payroll system.
Is it the same way at DPW, right? DPW gets paid overtime. Is that included in 93, or is that an addition?
Yes.
How much, will we get to the EBW if you have that break out with you guys?
Yeah, I'd have to...
How much is that in 93, okay? And sorry, chief, dumb question. Just curious, what is daylight savings overtime?
That's the one hour if someone works a nine-hour day instead of an eight-hour day.
We're working when that clock hits two. So you got, some years you make out?
No, I get it.
You work a seven-hour shift. There's some years where you're working that nine-hour shift.
Sorry. Had to ask. And go back to the body cam, or the Icon camera, or the Icon, what do we call it?
The Icon.
That's it. That is for body cam.
That's for body cam, in-car camera, and the tasers.
So, that's what I was going, when we initially did the body cams, it was roughly 400 grand?
It was $250,000 per year. And we added, that got us the body worn cameras, the in-car cameras, and it got us a taser refresh at that point, because we already had tasers.
And so, I think I'm, or Councilman Hendrickson was, can we get a breakdown? That was again, in theory, I mean, not saying we shouldn't have done it, but that was part of, the state, when it passed the law at the time, right, that was part of. I would like to know, again, in each department, how much we are doing. I know you do a lot. Where, again, the state's mandating something, and we're covering the cost. This is a big one. I know you got some grants at one point, right, I think?
Thirty percent of the first year was reimbursed.
But I think people need to understand, again, how everything flows downstream. And this is a big one. This year, the department's a big one, where a lot of it flows downstream, and we have to pick up the cost. I'm not picking on it, but it's just amazing, again. Scannick River, I think if you don't get the sense of, we're covering 10 grand, they're doing nothing. Okay, and they should have someone for EPA there, they're supposed to. They don't. So I mean, I think it's interesting that people, just, you know, to show people, to understand where their tax dollars are going and being misspent and where not being misspent. And so it's easier to explain when we're not cutting someone's budget, because we have no choice at the local level. You understand where I'm going? Some of these things are great examples, that if we don't pick it up here, it doesn't get done, even though the state in its wisdom says, "You have to do it." The body cams are a great example. Accreditation's a great example. I would also love to know how many other departments in the state are actually complying with the law. I guess, I would assume there's not a lot of them.
Well, we are accredited.
We are, I know we are.
We are accredited to the Kalia standard. All the departments are required to accredit to the lowest of the state standards right now, and that is supposedly going to go up in the future, but that's been a heavy lift for a lot of...
I know. I think it needs to be documented when we're trying to defend costs here. Because, you know, it drives me nuts, right? We have to cut to the dog. We have to go, we're not gonna ask you about daylight savings. And yet, folks, oh, just, oh, don't cut my budget, don't cut my budget. But everyone shifts everything to the local level, and that's when you have to make the real decisions. But if people understand shifting to the local level, there's a huge cost to that. I know your department is wanting to get the body cams, I remember going through that. At one point, I'll be upfront, I didn't want to spend the money. I certainly understand why we're doing it. It was a good, we had to do it the right way. But I think that's really needs, people need to see that cost, especially the body cams will be years where we have spent a tremendous amount of money, and it's a good investment, but again, that was shifted to us.
The only difficulty is, a great deal of the expenditures occur because they are state mandated, and I think that's the broader point.
Exactly.
But where, I mean, where that line would be drawn, I mean, the Freedom of Information Act, right? Freedom of Information Act is a state statute, and it requires that we comply with all of those requests. All the training obligations at the initial level and at the advanced level are all state mandates. So the broader point is outstandingly made. Tracking it would be challenging.
I agree, but I think it's the exercise that needs to happen. People are gonna understand where their tax dollars are going, and how someone could decide whether we're spending too much on one department or we're not spending enough. And I understand it's a big lift, and if you can't, I just think it's, we have to get there. Because, again, I'm sorry, we come to the budget, and we're gonna be going over a certain department, and it's the same argument that we hear every year, "Oh, you know, can't cut my budget. It's only about money." Well, again, there's things that we have to cover. I think people need to understand that. And maybe that'll actually open their eyes when they vote at higher levels of government. You know, look, yeah, some people may be great, but all they're doing is shifting the cost at a local level. I think it's important for people to understand it, and I know your department is, for example, I think what you, I mean, I'm certainly not gonna speak for Jeff, who, but I think you have actually an example where we were using overtime in Thompsonville a few years ago. We had it. We had some overtime. We put it in a full-time force. Has there been, I think what the mayor was asking, is there been a one-to-one savings if they're not?
I think you actually, I actually cut the Thompsonville walking patrols as a result.
Right, I think there's, so you have, maybe it's not exactly what he's asking for. But you actually have a real-time example in the last five years. You could look and say, "Here's what you got by hiring, you know, I forget, I'm sorry, four officers," I should know this, right? "Four officers, and we have a substation, and it's, and we were," I know, 'cause we went through this with overtime. You're right, we got a full-time overtime budget, and I know other folks are, that's actually, I think, to get a little bit to what you're talking about, doesn't it make sense to spend almost $600,000 in overtime to actually, and, again, I'm not, but I think it's, again, these are the discussions we have to have.
And these are state problems.
Right, but I'm saying, these are the things, if we're gonna manage every dollar as tightly as we, which we have to do, I agree with you guys.
There's no argument about it, but unfortunately, there's state mandates that we don't have.
I'm not arguing about state, yeah, I'm talking about, yeah, I mean, I agree. That's what I'm saying. That's what I wanna start laying out for people. How much are we covering because of the state is under, I mean, it's a tremendous amount of our $165 million budget?
I got a list right here started, and they have...
And the reason why we're on TV is we're trying to educate our public, and supposedly, with the point of doing this is to educate where your tax dollars are going. And I want to do that. I want, I'm sorry, I wanna know where my money's going. Maybe I'm in a minority in this country. But stuff that's happening at the federal level really drives me crazy. When my dollars are getting ripped off, and I have to work longer and harder every single day to be able to afford to live, and yet, everyone's okay with it. So for me, as elected official, I'm gonna ask tough questions. If people don't like it, great, don't like me. I'm good. I'm good with it. Because I think this is, and I appreciate this, and I appreciate being on TV, 'cause I think people need to understand it. I don't wanna keep laboring it, but if you could, give it a go and say, I think, again, you get the example in the overtime with the Thompsonville force, which I think is great, 'cause again, that, I think, has been probably one of the, I hate to use this term, I don't use the word term "investment," 'cause government taxes, it doesn't invest, is, you know, actually made a commitment, and I think we've seen the value from a money perspective, and 'cause people forget, we were worried about folks getting shot about four years ago, all the things that we decided to do. There is a return on the investment. Knock on wood, we're not dealing with that every single day. And so, and I'll just say this last thing, again, I wanna say, I appreciate, I don't wanna get to the detail, when you give us the updates on the drug overdoses and all sort of things. Look, people need to understand, these are real issues, and to your point on the fentanyl, you know, and, I mean, when you, just rough math, I think you showed 65 overdoses. One a week in this town, and it's, I mean, that's a crisis. Everyone wants to call it a crisis. That's a crisis. And it's not just one age. It's every single person from whatever, I mean, that, for me, I just wanna say, scares the crap out of me. I hate to use that word, because that is significant. And yet, man, that's what we should be talking about. Thank you.
Couple things off of what Mike had said. Chief, you had said that the state requires the lowest accreditation. Can you tell us, where does Kalia line up with that?
Happy to. I would describe it effectively as the state has the three tiers, and Kalia exceeds the highest state tier. So we have eclipsed the state standard to a point where frankly, the state review for us is almost like a, "Okay, let me put down my cup of coffee and meet with this person, 'cause it's gonna go like that." And that's something all of you should be very proud of. We take some degree of, you know, blood pressure check when it's time for our Kalia accreditation every year remotely, and then every fourth year onsite, you'll remember you were here when he came out a year and a half or so ago, and the deputy chief and I were joking earlier. You'll remember that ended, that culminated when he came in and said, "And in terms of areas of improvement, areas of Kalia non-compliance?"
And probably one of the best words in the country.
That's a feather on every cap this year. On every cap this year.
And I know Chief Brazza, I mean, this was, it was stress time for him, and for you also, and to both of you. Phenomenal. And my last question is, when you're looking through 51 personal services salaries, you have a line item for stipends. One is $55,982, and then several lines down, you have another line item, stipends others, which is $35,712. Between the two is almost $90,000. Can you explain what those are for?
They are both contractual. One is educational, and one is EMT.
Okay. All right, and that, EMT is a voluntary program for our officers?
So everyone has to, everyone has to be trained to what we call the EMR level. That's the lower of the two. And footnote, there are some departments that have even dropped off of that. They have dropped down to what we would call first responder, in essence CPR certified, if you will. So the first license by the state is EMR. People have to be that as a minimum. For anyone old enough to remember, we used to call that MRT. The next level up is EMT, and the people that we have that are EMTs are EMTs, yes, in essence voluntarily, because you do not have to be at that level. But that allows our folks that respond concurrently with EMS to be advanced to that next level if they're the ones that get there first.
Right, okay, 'cause I know some residents have questioned the stipends throughout the budget. So if we could explain when we go through the departments what these are for, it answers all the questions about that.
We know the value substantially in a college-educated police officer. We know the value substantially in an EMT-trained police officer. Those are contractual recompense for those achievements.
All right, thank you. Jim, do you have anything? No, Jim's good. What about you, Cindy? You all set?
All set, thank you.
Thank you both. Anybody else? Well, I wanna thank you, chief and deputy chief. Again, another phenomenal department in this town. And did you want to... Okay, so I think we'll call it a night. A motion to adjourn?
Motion. Second.
On the favor? Your turn. Thanks to everyone. We'll see you tomorrow night.